Welcome to the eighth hearing of the committee's inquiry into the planning system and the impacts of climate change on the environment and communities. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Oran Nation, the traditional custodians, on the lands which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders, past, present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name's Sue Higginson and I am the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. So I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. I note that various witnesses today will be participating via video conference. A few notes just briefly on virtual hearing etiquette to minimise disruptions and assist our hand side reporters. If the participant loses their internet connection and is disconnected from the virtual hearing, they are asked to rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee secretariat. And can I ask committee members to clearly identify who questions are directed to? And could I also ask everyone to please state their name when they begin speaking? And could the witnesses on video conference please mute their microphone when they're not speaking? Please remember to turn your microphone back on when you are getting ready to speak. If you start speaking whilst muted, please start your answer again so it can be recorded on the transcript. Members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so we can all be heard clearly. Also, to assist Hansard, may I remind members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphone and avoid making comments when your head is turned away. So, welcome and thank you very much for making the time to come and give evidence today. Could each of you as witnesses please, starting from my left, state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation? Ms Lamont?
My name's Corinne Lamont. I'm an organizer and volunteer with Wambrool SOS. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Lamont.
Good morning. I'm Mark Lamont. I'm also a volunteer at Wambrool Beach SOS. I live in Wambrool. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you, both of you. And would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this morning. We pass on apologies from Justin Hickey, who is a co-founder of Wambrool Beach SOS, who was ill today and can't attend, but we include his comments in our responses today. There is a public trust that beaches such as Wambrool Beach will be here for future generations. The New South Wales Coastal Management Act and its planning objects are meant to back that trust. Unfortunately, when it comes to Wambrool Beach, that trust has been shaken. It's not so much that the planning system for beaches is broken. It is more that the planning principles and processes have not been followed, or worse, that they've been abused or distorted. And in that, or for that, there remains, appears to be a lack of accountability. And I'd like to share, we'd like to share with you, a couple of examples of that that will take one minute. In 2021, the former Director of Planning at Central Coast Council, Mr Scott Cox, correctly reminded the Wambrool Beach Seawall Task Force that the Coastal Zone Management Plan, or CZMP, action for Wambrool Beach was not, not an action for a seawall, not an action to build a seawall. That was minuted in that committee and Adam Crouch MP sat on that task force. Unfortunately for Wambrool, Mr Cox left council a few months later. And he was replaced by Dr Alice Howe, the new director, who has since declared that the CZMP is a mandate to build a seawall at Wambrool. And so it seems that black has suddenly become white. You could say that the CZMP process was hijacked. Since taking up her role at council, Dr Alice Howe has supported the seawall overseeing council's partnership with the WPA beachfront owners, who are finalising a massive seawall DA submission right now, with council consented as a seawall DA co-applicant. Dr Howe's pro-seawall CZMP read interpretation is supported by Adam Crouch MP and Rick Hart, the council administrator. There is now significant opposition to the seawall in Mr Crouch's electorate. And so Mr Crouch says the seawall decision is with council. And this begs the question as to how Mr Crouch previously could have made the seawall an election promise. For years, the WPA and Adam Crouch claimed the seawall would save Wambrool. They and council marketed that myth, even though the 2017 Mars and Jacob Associates report found no evidence to support that claim. That report was buried. While council intends to be a seawall DA co-applicant with the WPA, council refuses to recuse itself from writing the assessment report that would accompany that DA for the review by the regional panel. And so to us, it looks and smells like a bit of a stitch up. The WPA said they were promised a seawall, the people living along the beach, but they never were. Instead, many of them signed positive covenants to restore their forage infronages after storms. But those obligations have not been heeded, nor have they been enforced by council. They knew the risks, and since then, experts, and even before then, experts have insisted that the vertical seawall would be in ruin, would be the ruin of the popular beach. There are many other dimensions to this which have been recorded in our submission, and we recognise our earlier meeting with this group at Wambrool, and we welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you very much for giving time to come today. We'll have some questions. And yes, I acknowledge that the committee did undertake a site visit to Wambrool, and we did get the very, the excellent benefit of meeting with community and some of the experts on the coast there. So thank you. Do you want me to, I'll hand to my colleague to start?
Oh, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Could I just get you to just elaborate a little bit on this? In your submission, you mentioned this 180-degree turnaround from the, what was the acronym again?
CZMP.
Which is?
Coastal Zone Management Plan.
Okay, could you just elaborate for us on the original justification for coming to the conclusion that as a result of that, the seawall shouldn't go ahead? And then the subsequent justification for using the same basis to come to a totally different conclusion?
Well, the CZMP, the actions in the CZMP were actually to review funding and design of a revetment wall, not even a seawall. When, after the 2020 storms, that's when Adam Crouch started his, or established his state-run task force. And as you know, the task force was called a seawall task force. So we were going to get a seawall out of the task force, and that was the action that they were pursuing with the seawall. The options that we were given...
So, sorry, sorry, Corinne, sorry, Ms Lamont, the chronological order was the CZ...
MP.
MP?
Yeah.
That was prior to the storm event?
2017.
That was, yeah, it was certified in 2017. I believe council were actually working on the CZMP from about 2014.
Right.
Certified in 2017. Council actually established a working group to look at the actions in the CZMP. I don't think that really moved anywhere or fast enough for Adam Crouch. And I think there was a perfect opportunity after the 2020 storms to push the seawall option along, and that was definitely taken by Adam Crouch.
So in other words, the storm event became a catalyst for political action?
That's, that's right. And there was an expectation by the beachfront owners, and I think by Mr Crouch, that there needed to be action because of the storm.
Yeah.
But the CZMP actions were specifically around sand nourishment, around dune revegetation, and around the review of designs and funding for a revetment wall. But as was mentioned by the previous director, Mr Cox, he told the task force there was never an action to build a seawall. However, in statements since then, in more recent years, and even most recently when we met with Dr Howe, she has cited, council's website cites the CZMP actions as a kind of mandate for a seawall, which is not.
Could I just ask, just one more clarification, because I know that we're going, there's a bit of granular detail coming now. But could you please, just for the purpose of the committee, just briefly identify and explain the difference between revetment and wall? And so that it's clear what we're actually discussing? And also, I understand that you've brought a document and you're seeking to table that document, just letting the committee, is that the case?
That's right, that's right. And on the front page of that document, you have an example of a drawing, illustration of a vertical seawall, a hard seawall. These are hard structures that, as the name suggests, are vertical. That is what we understand is going to be proposed in the DA that's being finalised at the moment. A revetment wall is a totally different structure. It's usually a combination of rocks and loose materials, gabions, sometimes in wire cages that are flexible and are situated, usually sloping along the beach. Sometimes they're buried. Speaking with Angus Gordon, who was the expert who was previously on the coastal panel before it was endorsed, the CZMP that is, had noted that there were earlier documentation around a possibility of a buried revetment, but never a hard vertical seawall of the sort that's being proposed here. And the CZMP action was not to build anything, it was just to review one. As when I spoke to Angus Gordon about this, he said, it's like, we're not sure. As a coastal panel, it needs further investigation. And at the time, around 2017, there was an expectation that the Mars and Jacob Associates report by the Office of Environmental Heritage would actually make some findings about cost-benefit analysis for a seawall. And when that CBA, Cost-Benefit Analysis, was released, it actually tabled that the worst options economically were in fact the seawall options. And it proposed different strategy, a more adaptive strategy, which is what we and other experts believe.
Thank you. And all committee members now have got a copy of the document. Thank you for that. Mr Baragie, if you want to go back to detailing the process, thank you.
So, in light of this, so we have the CZMP revetment as a possibility of one of a suite, as you've said, the sand re-nourishment and...
Dune revegetation.
Dune revegetation. Now, as a result of this hard, as you put it, seawall proposition, what has been the process for people to challenge that train of logic with council, if anything?
There hasn't been any.
It's actually been stacked against the community, we would say, because the public consultation, which was quite significant by council, but it was corralled in such a way that the only options the community was able to respond to were all seawall options. So after the Mars and Jacob report comes out and says seawalls are the worst options, and there's these other adaptive strategies, the council consultation around 2020-ish only said, what type of seawall do you like? A seawall that's like this, a seawall like this, one like this, or one like this?
And was that challenge, was that monolithic option challenged by anyone?
Yes, that most, in the responses, the most popular response, or one of the most popular responses to that survey that council put on a website was, actually, I don't like any of these seawalls. I prefer a different option. Why isn't it here? And there was a significant outcry in the community as to why council had not allowed constituents to actually say, we would prefer investigation into these other adaptive options, as per the CZMP and as per other actions by other councils.
And the response from council to those submissions?
Council then formed a view, particularly Dr Howe, when we met with her a couple of times, that it became the adopted position, was what she would call, the adopted position of the council was a seawall. We then challenged that and said that there was no ever, there was never a time where an elected council had endorsed the construction of a seawall, certainly not a vertical seawall. And in fact, all of the proclamations by council previously, prior to administration, were that council would not engage in a seawall because it could not afford one. So, Dr Howe had started, and I think their website today still says that the council's adopted position is to build a seawall, but to rely on the WPA, the private landowners along the beach, to form as a coalition to fund the majority of that seawall, with council acting as a co-applicant.
So just on that, is it your evidence that you ask, just so that we can be assisted? This adopted position, you can't see any, the democratic basis for that you're challenging? In terms of where that's come from, it sounds very much like all of the evidence that was before, the community and the council, and anyone else for that matter, was that the seawall was not the best mechanism to go forward. There was a bunch of options on the table, including through the CZMP. And then the adopted position, it would appear that that perhaps has come from council staff somewhere internally? Or do you have any view on where that might otherwise have come from?
Seawall task force?
Well, I think you can trace this back to 2003, where council originally looked, and even the late 90s, where council actually looked at putting a revetment wall across along Wambrool Beach. At that time, sand nourishment and different types of seawalls, different forms of protection were actually investigated. Sand nourishment actually came up as a preferable option, or a very good option for the beach. But unfortunately, because it hadn't been studied, or any studies, or feasibility studies into actually adopting sand nourishment as a solution for Wambrool, it was never pursued. So at that stage, even the environmental impact statement was based on a buried revetment wall. So that was back in 2003. So as I know, council didn't get the funding from the state government to be able to pursue that. And since then, nothing was really done about a seawall at Wambrool Beach. I've been told recently by someone, a person positioning council, that no one ever thought a seawall was ever going to be built. And that's certainly the case if you look at a court document back in 2014, where even council's counsel in a legal case has basically said a seawall was really, talk of a seawall was just spin. It was never going to happen.
Can I ask, in terms of the, that council co-applicant, is it necessary for them to be a co-applicant?
No.
How did that come about?
Well...
Affordability.
They, the main applicant are the private landowners along the beach, coordinated by the WPA, the acting entity. Council has more or less gone along for the ride and has provided them a lot of support in that design process, setting up an EDR and so forth. But council is under no obligation to be a co-applicant for the seawall DA. And in fact, there have been cases of DA's being lodged by private landowners previously. I think about the Pacific Five, Pacific Six?
Pacific Six, but I think in this case, what actually happened with the WPA, it got to a stage in 2021 where I think, because the CZMP was going to expire, but it did get extended, I think council was getting pressured by the state government at the time to actually find a solution for Wambrool Beach. But council did not have the funding to do it, and I don't think they were going to get funding from the state government for private property protection. So at the time, the WPA, members from the WPA basically approached council and wanted to discuss a solution. That solution actually ended up being a copycat of Coleroy. And that's how we arrived at the solution that WPA are working with.
This evidence that you've alluded to in terms of all the submissions that were made to council on alternatives to, like, can we consider other things? Where would we find that?
The group that did the surveying for council created a report, and it does cite this noticeable, notable response by the community of their interest in non-seawall options and the fact that there was no non-seawall option there. To Madam Chair's earlier question, I believe that it was the 2020 storms that changed everything.
Right.
The 2020 storms caused a massive movement of the goalposts.
Yeah.
Before the 2020 storms, most of the landowners along the beach...
Because the owners got concerned and then lobbied the local member?
That's part of it, absolutely. And also, the private landowners knew that they had all, well, many, most of them had signed positive covenants and indemnities where they, when they bought the properties years ago or developed them more recently, had committed on deed, on their title, to restore the sand dunes along their frontages at their expense and to replant indigenous vegetation at their expense, and that they took on all risk and liability. When the 2020 storm came and that risk was finally realised, their response was totally different. There was not a strong effort by landowners to restore their sand dune frontages and plant vegetation. No, no, no. A couple did, but most didn't. Instead, there was a massive media campaign in 2020, we've got the archive footage, of WPA landowners and even Mr Crouch going on to TV in 2020 and saying, these storms are terrible, it's putting incredible risks on our properties. We don't want the living rooms of our homes to be the battleground of this seawall issue. We need to have protection, et cetera, et cetera. And it was then that $2 million of New South Wales government and council land was spent on emergency works to put rocks and stones and barriers on the beachfront. The actual plan for emergency, the emergency plan, which is in the documentation there, says that private landowners were entirely responsible to manage any risk that came from such storms.
So can I ask you on that point, was there any representations made from either the state government or the local council for the residents to make good on those covenants?
No. No, this has been a real problem, that we know of no cases where council has ever enforced a positive covenant on a property owner. We know that there were some cases where property owners started to take things in their own hands, putting in their own makeshift works, and that was shut down, I think, to some extent by council. But this idea that because of the storm and the sympathy that the storm brought upon the WPA, that suddenly $2 million was just spent like that to put rocks along there, as if that was the plan? That was never, it was actually documented to be the reverse of what was planned. And so that was the moving of the goalpost, where what was really a risk to private landowners, a risk that was known to private, that they had factored into their purchasing decisions, their planning decisions as private owners, that risk was then being shifted under the sympathy of the storm damage to become a public problem. And if you listen to the news footage, it was, where's council? Council won't budget. Council should be jumping in here. And the then minister, I think, or one of the ministers at the time in New South Wales, former New South Wales government, was sort of seen as coming to the rescue with all this rock works and emergency works that were put in place.
And was council, at this particular point in time when all this was happening, was council in administration then, or was it elected?
Not at this stage. They, this occurred in July. Council went into administration in 2020. The problem with the covenants that Mark has mentioned, the development control plans actually state that council should, as part of a development application, there should be a positive covenant put on title. Now, our research into the positive covenants that we've actually undertaken, a lot of new buildings or dwellings, developments along the beach have not got them. And we're trying to find out from council, why hasn't it been applied with every dwelling that's being built? Whereas the development control plan does actually say that it should be there. The other issue with the development control plan, if you have a look at the notes that are provided, there's a building line that goes across the beach. Now, that building line is basically a hazard line. You're not supposed to build across that building line. But in the DCP and the CZMP, part of the revision that came through at the CZMP was to make undevelopable land along Wambrool Beach developable. And if you look at some of the blocks, you didn't have people building on the other side of that land. There'd be no land. You couldn't put a house on what was available and classed as developable land. So they're allowed building across the other side of the land. And it's basically saying, we support your risk-taking.
It's a signal.
Yeah, it's a signal. Keep doing it.
What's the community, I mean, we're in a situation now where council's still under administration until the September elections.
September.
You've got a DA that has been lodged or not?
There's been a pre-lodgment of a partial seawall DA a couple of months ago. It's like a test, I think.
Yep.
That was returned to the WPA. We understand that the WPA is planning to lodge their proper DA at the end of this month, they say, but we don't know.
And what's the community's response been from your understanding to this happening on the cusp of a democratically-elected council in September?
There's a lot of community concern about it. There is an overwhelming community objection to a hard seawall of this scale. And there's also a cynicism in the community that's palpable, that an unelected council administration is taking such an aggressive course, particularly in the face of the CZMP action simply being to review.
So is the view, is the view that given we're only literally a few months away from council election, then wait till there's democratically-elected council?
Absolutely.
And can I just also, can I throw in here? One of the things that we haven't raised, but I know it's throughout your submission and the kind of, the basis for which we're discussing the, and the objection and the concern, is what about the beach and the public, you know, the future of the beach? The future of public access to the beach? And the notion around that original concern and planning, the deeper planning concern and response was nourishment and possibly revetment? The motivation for that is so that we can maintain...
The beach.
A beach. And so can you just tell us a little bit about that beach? The public access to that beach, the community's desire to maintain that? Is that something you can provide as evidence?
Yes. If Justin Hickey was well today, he would be here to speak to the fact that he has been a member of the surf club for decades. His family has lived here forever. And we know as residents that the beach is the heart and soul of the local community. It is a treasured asset for locals and for tourists. It is significant economically as well. When we speak to expert geomorphologists, coastal geomorphologists like Professor Andrew Short, he is adamant that if there is a seawall of the sort that's being proposed here, a vertical seawall of the scale of 1 to 1.3 kilometres length, that eventually there will be a seawall and no beach. That the seawall being vertical, it's the worst option, as Mars and Jacob Associates found in 2017, would lead to the attrition of sand along the beach over years and years, to a stage where, I asked Professor Short, would that mean that you would have to maybe check whether it's high tide or low tide to know whether you can walk down the beach or not? And he said it could be worse than that. The scouring effect along the foot of the seawall could be significant. And there's also an adjacent issue of the impact on flooding of the adjacent lagoons. And to put things in context, as you asked about the local environment, there are between 40 and 60 homes along the beachfront proper. There are hundreds of homes that are built at low level around the adjacent lagoons, the Terrible Lagoon, the Wambrool Lagoon. I don't know, I'd hazard a guess there'd be a factor of 10, maybe 20 to 1 in terms of the number of people who would be affected by lagoon flooding compared to those who live on the beachfront. So there's a broader collective knowledge of the impacts that this could have on what's a pretty unique beach. It's 1.3 kilometres, it's a very significant surfing beach with tidal lagoons at each end. And as even a member of the WPA said on video in 2017, that, you know, the whole reason for this end-to-end seawall, in her words, was so the end waters would go into the lagoons. And at the time, it was lost on her, I think, she was sincere, but it was lost on her that, hold on, if the end waters go into the lagoons, that's where hundreds of people live. And so...
And on that point, what studies have we had in terms of those, pardon the pun, flow-on effects?
Okay. The Mars and Jacob report and the more recent Manley Hydraulics report actually recommended further studies into what the impacts would be on the lagoons. That was actually an action from those reports. Those studies have never been conducted. We have, however, had Angus Gordon, who has studied the beach significantly, give a professional view that the seawalls ending not far from the openings of the lagoons would create what he calls efficiencies of the channels, the inlets to the lagoons, a deepening of the lagoon entrances, which would cause for larger volumes of water during high tide, king tide surges to push into the lagoon, exacerbating flooding. Mr Angus Gordon also reminds us, as did Professor Short, that the most significant flooding events around the lagoons were not due to rainfall, they were due to high tide sea surges.
And so that flooding issue is already an issue now, is it?
Yes.
Oh, yes. And are the residents aware of this potential in the lagoon?
They weren't. I think we very much made that, the people around the lagoons aware of it. Council basically got quite upset with us for doing that and suggested that we were traumatising the community by letting them know that they could be facing increased flooding because... flooding because of the seawall.
But isn't the logical response to that from council to conduct a proper study if they don't believe that it has any veracity?
That's correct.
With the study, we've been advised that there will be a study if the assessors actually request a study into the impacts.
The assessors?
Assessors.
As in terms of the independent development approval?
No, it'll be the regional, regional panel that'll be assessing the DA.
And that's where the DA goes, assuming this is lodged now, that's where the DA would ultimately end up.
That's what we've been told.
That's right. And, but along with that, it's tradition that whenever a DA is passed to the regional panel, that there would be what's called an assessment report that's prepared and sent along with that, almost like a, this is what we think the call should be.
And that's normally prepared by council.
That's right. But in this case, that creates an issue in that council is a co-applicant, as we've spoken this morning, who is so bent on this seawall, we're worried about the independence of that, and we know that Angus Gordon is also worried about the independence of that.
And has there been any suggestion, I mean, perhaps, yeah, like whether the New South Wales Department of Planning would do that, or is that something the community's made loud?
We've written to council on the issue, we've asked them to clarify whether they would recuse themselves, and to date, they have not done so. They've simply come back with a standard line that the DA has not been lodged yet.
Well, could a potential way through be to wait until there's an elected council in September and then get them to put in the assessment?
Absolutely, because an elected council would be representative of the community voice.
Although there's still that conflict, if the council is a co-applicant, there's still that conflict potentially.
Conflict is there, but the way we see it, we can't stop the homeowners from putting a DA through. I mean, they have every right to do that.
We're not here for that.
Yeah. But there's no reason why council should be in there supporting the DA, that's the way we see it. And if we had an elected council, we wouldn't be sitting here dealing, talking to you now.
We're running out of time, we're waiting on the next week, we've still got, we've got a couple of minutes we can go over if it's okay. But one thing I would just love to hear from before we do finish is the, some evidence around nourishment. And I know that you have been looking at this issue long and hard and deep for a long time. What can you tell us about beach nourishment for your specific local environment, but also what you know in terms of the future of coastal erosion and other sensitive areas where we're looking at similar issues, and the idea of nourishment locally and more broadly?
I, many years ago, studied coastal geomorphology at New South Wales University, but I don't hold myself out as a contemporary expert. But I have the sense, and we have the sense as a group, to ask of experts such as Professor Short, Angus Gordon, to read the work of Professor Tom and others on this issue. And adaptive strategies are the, by far, the more preferred option, that's where the world's going, and I think Angus Gordon has spoken of that in this place. That sand nourishment is an adaptive strategy, along with others, which include beach revegetation, and even voluntary retreat, which, quite contrary to what Mr Crouch has said, does not mean that homeowners along the beach are forced off their properties. Wambrool Beach SOS and the community at large does not carry a view that, you know, homeowners should just be pushed out of the area and, you know, restore the sand dunes. There might be some who believe that, we don't, it's not a mainstream idea, and it's never been suggested. But Professor Short and others have said that it may be in 10, 20, 30 years, that some homes on that beachfront, some which are further forward of the building line than they should be, perhaps there should be voluntary buybacks where the council or an authority acts in the market. It's happened before at Wambrool, it's happened all along the New South Wales coast, shouldn't be ruled out. But adaptive strategies such as sand nourishment have been proved in other parts of Australia and around the world. If we look at the case of the Gold Coast, an area requiring three times as much sand along the Gold Coast was satisfied by hopper dredge within a matter, I think, of three months, at a cost of about $4.75 per cubic metre by a hopper dredge, literally taking the sand up off the ocean shelf in a way that was sustainable, and then spraying that sand onto the Gold Coast beach. That was seven years ago, and 75% of the sand is still on the Gold Coast beach and it does it just fine. Wambrool only needs about 900,000 to a million cubic metres of sand, which could be furnished in such a way. This is a really important point, though. Council has never, in the last five years or so, requested support from the New South Wales Government for such sand nourishment, except for in combination with their vertical seawall. And that's the real problem.
So no cost-benefit analysis of the seawall v. the nourishment done?
Yes, that Mars and Jacob did that assessment and found that the sand nourishment option was far more preferable. It was working within constraints of 2017.
How much is the seawall projected to cost?
Could be up to about $40,000 per metre.
$40,000 per metre?
$1,000 per metre. We're talking tens of millions of dollars.
And who foots that cost?
Most of it would be footed by the private landowners who contribute for their sections of the beach, but a significant portion would also be funded by council and possibly through state government grants, noting that the Ministerial Corporation for Public Lands within the Department of Planning has ownership or management of five blocks of land along the beach, they're state government land. We understand that there's been a resistance to include them in the seawall. We are imploring New South Wales Government not to include access rights or licensing arrangements for the walling of that public land. They are, they're dune frontages and they should just be left as they are, they should be benefiting from sand nourishment. There's also been, we think, some game playing in that, in statements that have been made about the seawall, there's this idea that once a seawall goes in, everything on one side is private land that the private landowners look after, and everything on the other side is public land, that the public... So that is suggesting, and even the, one of the former directors, leaders of the WPA went and spoke at council and said that she felt it was really the public's obligation to put the sand nourishment in front of the seawall, not theirs. And yet, it's the seawall that will cause this increased attrition of sand over time, according to experts. So there's a real public-private issue here, we have a natural dynamic interface between public and private. What we are suggesting at Wambrool Beach SOS is that council, either now or once there's an elected representative council, take up an action to approach and sit with New South Wales Government to come up with a way of being able to get support for sand nourishment primarily for the purpose of public beach amenity and improvement, but with an incidental benefit to private landowners who sit behind that, behind that public beach. And also, that's consistent with the objects of the CMA, the Coastal Management Act, which says that in all cases, more adaptive soft strategies should be tested first before hard strategies.
Just quick, because I know we're just about out of time, just quickly on this point about the public land should be retained, is there, is there an argument from the private owners to say that we want you to be part of this because otherwise we end up with this toothless tiger effect where you have holes in the seawall and it's not as effective? So they're essentially saying to the government, please come on board, otherwise our seawall's not going to be effective?
Exactly.
And this is the thing, the CZMP has promoted a lagoon-to-lagoon solution. We know this is not going to be a lagoon-to-lagoon solution. There's a lot of homeowners that actually do not want the wall. They actually see and have said, told us and Dr Reed, that sand nourishment is a far superior solution. But they were never offered sand nourishment as a solution. So that's why they've gone with the wall. Now, the head of the, or one of the committee members of the WPA has basically told the beachfront homeowners to basically sign on to a DA whether you want it or not, because at the end of the day, the goal of it is to get them the ability to get a seawall if and when they want it. So the seawall will definitely have walls. We know that there's people there that do not want a seawall.
So there are what we refer to as federation issues. Sure, they might collectively be able to get most people to sign up to a DA and getting council on the DA, but once that, if that DA is approved, and we hope it isn't, but if it ever was, the WPA has written to landowners saying, once we get the ticket, the DA ticket, it doesn't mean you actually have to go and build it. So this could create a situation where some people decide to put a bit of wall here, a bit of wall there. There's also the question of how many thousands of concrete trucks are going to be coming in and out of the beach to build this wall?
For how long?
For how long? There's talk about a park, let park near the Surf Club being used as a potential plant and equipment area for the equipment. We don't know where they're going to store the machines, where all the concrete trucks, I mean, how many thousands of concrete trucks are going to be coming up and down for how many years? And so it seems to be that some of the owners who have more at risk are pushing for this because they see that this federated perception is the best way of getting, at least getting a wall for the bits that they really want.
And so it's fair to, I think from everything we've heard today and the material, there was, there was a CZMP, which was by its very definition, a strategic and a, an approach to, a strategic approach to management of a part of the coastline that centred by giving life to the objects of the legal framework, the Coastal Management Act, the public interest, beach access, and balancing the needs of the beach, that got hijacked to some, at some point. And then what we've seen is some form of, it appears, some kind of political interference, but justifiably on the basis that those 2020 storms were showing some very dramatic implications of the impacts of coastal surge, coastal erosion on some individual private property. But we're literally sitting in a position right now where it's a decision where we either keep going down a path that will make the problem worse, or we pivot to going back to that very strategic staged broader view where we're looking at adaptation, because we've hit some hard walls of what, pardon the pun, some of the harder edges of adaptation. So we need to really, really look at, and it's not too late to do that by the sounds of it.
That's right.
And we, your previous question, we have actually approached council and asked them to defer any decision regarding the seawall until we do get an elected council. And they've straight up refused. I asked if they could pass a resolution to actually do that. The administrator said he wouldn't do it. We actually mentioned it to the Director of Planning to see what could be done to stop the seawall, and she said a resolution, but she actually said she would not support any resolution to stop the seawall.
We think there's more important work to be done around sand nourishment. As one academic said, that sand nourishment isn't necessarily a silver bullet. There are sustainability considerations and management considerations in relation to sand nourishment, and I believe that Angus Gordon has spoken a little bit about that. But the CMA is very clear that these more adaptive approaches are preferred as the first step, and we believe that council has not taken appropriate action to advance that option without a seawall. And we can, I can understand a landowner thinking, I've got certainty with a seawall, but that doesn't necessarily, that's not necessarily the case. There are many landowners along the beach who are only two or three metres above the beach, they will be at the low sections, there are others who are six to eight metres above the beach. And when there's a sea surge, I wouldn't want to be with a seawall, the people at the lower ends of the beach, of the wall, because the lower end of the wall is going to get overtopping, and overtopping is a massive issue that can cause, you know, a lot of remorse on the part of those who thought a seawall would save them, and you might be protecting the back door, but what about the front door?
It feels a little bit like my community of Lismore, many of us built houses as high as we thought we needed to, but it wasn't high enough, you know? And then we had the idea, we've got a levee that'll protect us from some flood, and then it's kind of, all bets are off in terms of what we thought was predictable.
And I also want to put on the record that Wambrool Beach SOS is not, we do not see beachfront owners as enemies.
No.
We want them to have a good outlook as well as the beach, and we think both are possible.
And just, on that, on that point finally, in terms of Wambrool specifically, I think it was Professor Gordon was suggesting that it, there were views that there was a sand source, and that when talking to those sustainability issues, that there possibly is a source and there possibly is a path to doing that first step lighter adaptive nourishment.
Absolutely, but it's a question of scale. So the unit cost of sand for beaches like Wambrool drops dramatically down to $3 to $5 per cubic metre, as they saw in a Gold Coast, when you have a dredge that is purpose with the, to bring sand on to service a number of beaches. If New South Wales Government, in conjunction with federal government and local councils along the coast, were able to find the funding for a hopper dredge that would service New South Wales beaches, this federated approach could cause the cost of sand nourishment to drop significantly. There can be a lot of coordination around the timing of the dredges arriving at beaches and providing the nourishment. There can be a greater emphasis on local government's role and the community's role in dune revegetation to re-contour and restore beaches. We've seen it, is it Woolley or Lybeach?
Why can't they use the one that they're using in Queensland?
The one from Queensland was brought, a ship that came all the way from Denmark to Queensland, and this is the problem. That's an expensive exercise to lease a ship all that way. And when we spoke with Minister Sharp's advisers recently on this issue, they said they were looking into this and were waiting for potentially a time when Indonesia might need such a ship, so we could piggyback, New South Wales could piggyback off them. And Brendan Donoghue, who spoke at this place, rightly said, well, hold on, Australia should be taking the lead on that. Maybe Indonesia should be asking us when a ship is next going to be in the region rather than the other way around. And so this is the kind of coordination that will only occur when local councils like the Central Coast come clean and say, look, we are sincerely interested in sand nourishment without a seawall. Because the laws, as you may know, currently put any request for sand nourishment at the bottom of the list if it is for private protection. And this council only sees the sand nourishment at Wambrool as part of private protection, and that is wrong.
That's wrong, because it's about our beaches.
It is about the beach, and I believe, we know, and experts have confirmed this, that the primary protection of the beach and the crown land along that beach will incidentally give a lot of significant benefit to the homeowners, and we say good luck to them.
I mean, ideally, what you want is a study of the risks right along the New South Wales coast and a holistic approach to a cost-benefit analysis based on purchase of a hopper dredge and the sand re-nourishment that will have to take place over years because of climate change and all the rest of it.
Correct. And so what you just said almost mirrors the recommendations of the Mars and Jacob report in 2017, that has not been seen since.
The other, last thing I'd like to add is the houses, the new houses that are being built.
Can, sorry, can we get that tabled as part of the...
The Mars and Jacob report.
Have we got that?
The Mars and Jacob report.
I don't think you have.
I don't think we have, I think we might have, I've seen reference to it, but we don't have the full document. Is that something you would provide on notice?
I can provide it, but the problem with it is it disappeared. Even the State Library has not got a copy of it, and it's only like seven years old.
But you've got a copy.
I've got a copy, yeah.
Can you table that on evidence?
Could you please provide it?
We'll send it.
And also the survey results for, from council?
Yes, we can provide that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Council could do.
The last thing, if I can add, is just with the houses that are being built, if you look at the DAs that are attached there, they're being built to withstand any type of erosion, like they'll be standing in 100 years.
Because of the stilts?
Because of the foundations.
The piers go right down to rock.
I see.
So the only reason they want the seawall is so they can basically put a swimming pool in the backyard, and I've got a DA there to prove it.
Number 47.
They're built on the other side of the building line, and what's actually going on the other side of the building line is a swimming pool. They don't need a protection for their houses, they're going to stand forever.
So you have well-known seawall-type engineers like Peter Horton, who have written reports to support these DAs, including the one currently for 47 Ocean View Drive, which say that because it's being deep peered, it's therefore okay from an engineering perspective to place it in front of the building line closer to the beach. And this is basically a race to get closer to the closer to the beach whilst there is a simultaneous outcry when there's a storm in 2020 that we're too close to the beach. And so this, the seawall is being used as a way to protect the private interest without necessarily having regard for the public interest.
Or the inequity of actually putting a seawall to protect someone's backyard so they can put a pool in it, and at the same time, we have to sacrifice the beach and flood the lagoons as a result, it's just like blinding to me.
Has there been any attempt at...
We'll have to round up.
Communication between, for example, the WPA, you people and council to try and get some sort of a collective compromise approach?
I don't think that's been done very well. We did set up a meeting with the federal member, Mr Reed, Angus Gordon, and invited all beachfront owners to come along for a congenial open discussion information meeting to talk about the potential for sand nourishment. A couple of owners came along, but that's all.
And that was our effort. We invited council and the MPs.
I mean, unfortunately, council characterizes us as people who traumatize the community. We have gone to the experts. We intentionally did not want to get out there and start, you know, spreading stories about problems of this and problems of that. One of the first things we did as an association when we joined and formed was to get experts up to Wambrool, to sit down in the local club and to talk it through. And we continue to do that, and we get good support from the expert community.
Okay, our time has come to an end. Thank you very much for making time and coming today. We're very, very grateful. And I know the secretary will be in contact about the matters we've asked... And I know um the secretary will be in contact about the matters we've asked for you to take on notice and provide further documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Right. I note that we did have some difficulty in terms of the technology with our next witnesses. So um, yeah, so can I just check? Can the witnesses who are appearing now online hear me? I think I'm.
Yes.
That's you, Ms Kennedy?
Sorry.
Hello. Um, Mr Weir, can you hear me?
I can.
Fantastic. And um, uh, Ms Weir, can you hear me?
Ah, she's here. She didn't know she was attending, but yeah.
Okay, okay. And Dr Townley, are you there as well? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, welcome and thank you for making time to give evidence. Uh, could I please get each of you as witnesses to state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation? And Ms Kennedy, we'll start with you, please.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, my name is Ms Laura Kennedy. I am a committee member of Voices of South West Rocks Community Inc. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Kennedy. Mr Weir.
Uh, my name is Bruce Weir. I'm a member of a group called Jedy Fourshores, Let's Own Our Future. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Dr Townley.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just haven't got the text in front of me. I should have um had that. I'm just searching for it.
Um, what would you like to do, Dr Townley? An oath or an affirmation? And I can read that out and you can follow my words.
One piece of my chest. Can I do an affirmation, please?
Affirmation, certainly. So if you could just repeat after me, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now, would anyone like to make a short opening statement? Ms Kennedy, perhaps we start with you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I would just firstly like to acknowledge that I am darling you today from beautiful Dangadi subwater country and just pay my respects to elders past and present and future Dangadi leaders. In South West Rocks, which is where I am, we are experiencing a trajectory of unsustainable development and rapid widespread native vegetation clearing. We have a population of less than six thousand people, so we're not very big. However, there are thirteen new subdevelopment sites and nine are currently under construction or approved to start very soon. Six of those DAs that we have, six of the thirteen, were first submitted between nineteen ninety-three and twenty seventeen. So they're all kind of of significant age and preceding most recent event amendments to the environment, environmental planning and assessment regulation, which did provide some clarification on what constitutes physical commencement on a development. We, at South West Rocks, we have one route in and one route out. And we have been impacted quite significantly in the last six years by flooding and bushfires. And future catastrophic weather events are only going to continue and increase in severity the more that we continue this sort of mass clearing and ecological vandalism. We know that regional areas have to plan for future population growth, but development needs to be planned sustainably and it needs to avoid unacceptable impacts on the community, the environment, the economy and our cultural landscape. I believe that regional areas are increasingly bearing the brunt of, of, of climate change and extreme climate events. And we need to stop developing on flood prone and bushfire prone land. So while that might mean that we need to increase height limits in some places and density in regional centres and cities, it still has to be appropriate and we have to avoid fundamentally changing the character of our small towns. We have to look at land carry capacity and the suitability of land and how it's going to meet community needs and not just meeting growth targets. Particularly in coastal communities, I think we need to start really seriously looking at sea level rise as a result of climate change and what that's going to do for development or how that's going to impact development. And we also need to start protecting high biodiversity value land and sensitive land. Much of the land in South West Rocks is surrounded by sensitive land like national park, coastal wetlands and threatened species habitat. We need to protect that. So we need planning reform that prevents any further biodiversity loss, protects our environment, protects the community from development in high risk areas and protects us from the vulnerability to climate impacts. So I really appreciate being here today and we really appreciate the opportunity to have a dialogue around the impacts of climate change and developments. Our small coastal towns are really suffering under the need for housing, but we need to balance that with climate resiliency and that has to be addressed with sensible ecological and responsible environmental planning.
Thank you, Ms Kennedy. Thank you very much. Um, Mr Um, Weir, did you want to make an opening statement or Dr Townley? I, I understand we may be having some tech difficulties with Dr Townley, but would either of you like to make an opening statement?
If Sally Townley is there, she, I prefer her to go free first, but if, if she's not available, I have a written statement here in front of me that, that she provided in case this did happen.
Okay, Dr Townley? Oh, there you are. Fantastic. Do you want to give it a go, Dr Townley?
Yes, I will. And apologies if my um connection isn't so great. I hope it um holds up. So um thanks so much for the opportunity to speak today. Um, I'm Dr Townley. I'm the deputy mayor of of Coffs Harbour, being an elected repres-
Um, Dr Townley, do you, do you want to just turn?
And I have.
Dr Townley, do you want to turn your video off?
PhD in wildlife ecology, Coffs Harbour.
If you turn your video off, I think we might get a more stable connection. We, we, it's great to have had you appear, but let's go for your words now if we can.
Great. Great, thank you. So um yes, I'm part of a community group called Jedy Fourshores, Let's Own Our Future. Uh, we're not incorporated, but we have over eight hundred members and supporters. And the subject of our interest is centred around the harbour foreshores of Coffs Harbour. So we have wrapped around the harbour and a port, a long narrow coastal reserve of over fifty hectares, which was gazetted for environmental protection and public recreation. And that's managed by the city of Coffs Harbour as the crown land manager. And that area contains natural vegetation, parklands, play areas, public art and is very heavily used by visitors and locals. And then immediately to the west of that is a narrow strip of land, which until recently was surplus railway land. The North Coast Rail Corridor runs quite close to the ocean at that um part of Coffs Harbour. And in the last few years, the New South Wales Government's Property and Development New South Wales has released a series of concept plans indicating a, a very intensive redevelopment of that land. So PDNSW acquired that land last year from Transport for New South Wales. It's about four point five hectares and they paid the sum of two point two million dollars. Now, the, the concept plans indicate um building heights of up to six stories. And Minister Camper revealed recently that the plans include four hundred and fifty apartments, um nominally two hundred and fifty residential and two hundred short stay. And our group strongly opposes the plans for the following reasons. Um, first of all coastal vulnerability zone. So the majority of the parkland area is mapped within the coastal vulnerability um zone and a portion of the north, the northern part of the land proposed to be developed is also mapped within this zone. So we find it astounding that after requiring councils to do this work, do this mapping, have it adopted into the SEP, that a government department would then propose something um which appears completely to offend that SEP. There's also literal rainforest nearby and the Coffs Council has spent um considerable resources undertaking fine scale vegetation mapping. It's a very rare vegetation type or portion of the area proposed for these apartment buildings lies within the mapped literal rainforest area. So um again, it seems that Property and Development New South Wales is um proceeding with blithe regard, disregard of the provisions of that SEP. Um, currently in the area that we're talking about, the Coffs Harbour City Council, LEP specifies a height of five point five metres, so about one story. These plans before us indicate up to six stories. We um concerned about the impact of size and bulk. They would obscure the views um from the existing parklands. We've also investigated overshadowing and uh we know that the shadowing ratio in the late summer afternoon is one to seven. That is an object will cast a shadow seven times its height. So this would potentially be a shadow equivalent to a forty-two story building in these public parklands. Uh, if we talk about the zoning under the LEP, um, part of the area is zoned for public recreation and dwellings of all types are prohibited in that zone. The other part carries the zoning associated with the railway line. SP two infrastructure dwellings are also prohibited in zone. So because of the radical divergence between the current planning controls and the PDNSW concept plan, PDNSW is seeking a rezoning through a planning proposal. So we understand it's lodged, but it's yet to be publicly visible, hasn't come out of the planning portal. So we are unclear which pathway PDNSW will seek for this rezoning, but we will assume that it won't go via the council given that the resolved position of Coffs Harbour City Council opposes the development of apartments in this area. Um, so we're not sure if it's going to proceed through one of the other pathways such as a special activation precinct or through the transport oriented development. Um, we also note that the housing SEP can facilitate bonus building height increases if certain conditions are met. We note that the minister has made statements about the inclusion of affordable housing in this proposal. So it's also possible that the housing SEP might be employed to raise the levels even above um what we are seeing in the concept plan. And uh we note that the Coffs Harbour City Council offered to give PDNSW two blocks of serviced land in the CBD for the purpose of constructing affordable housing as an exchange for land at the jetty, as an exchange for keeping the jetty land in public ownership. Um, that offer was refused. We note that in some instances developer contributions may not be payable on the development of affordable housing. Since the land at the jetty doesn't have sewer or water infrastructure, we're concerned that if the proposal goes ahead, that the rate pays of Coffs Harbour might end up footing the bill for part of the service infrastructure costs. And we um draw your attention to the local planning direction, specifically direction four point two, which states that a planning proposal must not rezone land which would enable increased development or more intensive land use on land within the coastal vulnerability area. And also applies that for the literal rainforest areas. So it seems that any planning proposal, this radical rezoning, regardless, regardless of which pathway it takes, appears to be completely at odds with this planning, local planning direction. Um, and finally, um, we are concerned about Aboriginal interests and we know that the purview of the inquiry encompasses listening and learning from Aboriginal voices. Uh, we draw your attention to a report by the company called Marowen, which was a specifically Indigenous targeted consultation exercise undertaken of, on behalf of PDNSW. We note that the report identifies that privately owned residential development was generally not supported by those consulted and uh also note that an area of land immediately to the north has been granted to the Coffs Harbour District Land Council, Aboriginal Land Council as freehold title. And there doesn't appear to be any recognition of this in the concept plans um and how these dwellings would be tied in. We're very aware of the historic and contemporary significance of the Jedy Fourshores to the Aboriginal community and we feel that the PDNSW plan is incongruous with those values. So um in summary, we believe that this development would be ultimately at risk of coastal erosion. Um, we believe that the process of construction, changes in hydrology, stormwater runoff, foot traffic vehicles would compromise the parklands and the literal rainforest. We, we believe that it's unsuited to residential development of any kind. Um, we believe that the proposed development is contrary to a whole range of existing laws which seek to protect the coast and the coastal biodiversity and avoid development in hazard zones. We believe it's inconsistent with a range of strategies and policies such as the North Coast Regional Plan and the Coffs Harbour City Council's local growth management strategy, which identifies areas for future development and seeks to maximize infill. Um, we believe that the concerns of Aboriginal stakeholders and community members have been ignored. And we are curious about the financial um situation. The minister claims that the area will be, quote, self-sustaining and all monies will be invested back into the community. But no details of this underlying business case have been available for public scrutiny. And we just believe that massive investment in infrastructure within and close to the coastal vulnerability zone will only lead to problems in the future, likely at the cost of the public purse. So the best way to maintain, to mitigate coastal erosion is to maintain adequate vegetated buffers. And we believe overall that the best and highest use for this land is for inclusion into the existing parkland for passive recreation and open space to be enjoyed by the wider community for generations to come. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you very much. Um, and so we'll just have a few questions if that's okay. Um, and we'll um direct them specifically. I would like to, if it's okay, to just start um with you, Ms Kennedy. I just wanted to get a little bit, if I could, from you about where you referred to um the development, uh, and, and sorry, from the outset, also acknowledging that we, as the committee, did visit some of the areas with you and other members of the community and got the very um incredible benefit of being, standing onsite and looking at some of the developments and some of the areas of concern and some of those high biodiversity sensitive locations in your lovely local community and local environment. But could I ask you to please just give us a little bit of an outline about what you were talking about when you said the notion of the contest around substantial commencement and the development and the issues that the community's experienced? And I know we've referred to these as zombie DAs. Um, and uh, this committee has started to understand that's a very broad concept and takes many different forms. But if you could please share with the- many different forms. But if you could please share with the committee now your experiences as a community with the zombie D A notion?
Yeah, we, we, due to the scale of development in South West Rocks, there is, you know, quite, quite a varying number of, I guess what we'd call sort of zombie D A's are classed as historical development consents, consents. Um but one that has been quite controversial for us in South West Rocks is known as a rise development. It was originally a nineteen ninety-three uh development approval that had um sort of been sitting um dormant for uh well, um close to thirty years. Um, uh, the original development was for a hundred and eighty sort of tourist villas. I kind of like to think of it as like a kind of Club Med style resort um of, of accommodation. Um, and a developer purchased that land sort of during the pandemic and went to council to ask for the construction certificate. Council sort of said like, no, because you haven't done any work, which then went through multiple rounds of the Land and Environment Court. Eventually, the developer won on appeal on the basis that there had been soil testing done, so a small hole had been dug in the ground um to, to test the soil because there's oil terminals or there were oil terminals uh across the road. Um, that was because the wording in that did not kind of allow for that original works had to be substantial. So any works could go towards works having been started. So that's kind of something that I guess has been a little bit of a thorn in the side for us because we don't believe that soil testing, digging a very small hole in the ground to test for soil should constitute establishment works.
Thank you. And in relation to one of those projects and we saw the development now underway um on lands in South West Rocks, that was something that the council actually defended against in the Land and Environment Court and was successful. And then the proponent appealed, I, I think that was the case. Was that um, wa- was the community involved in that?
Yeah, so largely the actual court case and, and the, the sort of like legal um proceedings were, were driven by council. But the community has been very much involved in this whole development. We've been working with council as much as possible. Um unfortunately, what has happened in this incident is because they went, um they lost on appeal in the L E C. Uh, the judge asked council or requested council that uh to then pay the legal fees of the developer as well. So they had, we had, council had to award the construction certificate and also pay the legal fees, which is quite a hefty toll to take for our council and for our rate payers. So it really does impact us all. And it also meant that council was reluctant to take any further action because they'd already been sort of forced to pay legal fee, the, the legal fees of that appeal.
Thank you. Um, and also in terms of the um, the the biodiversity, the impacts of these decisions on biodiversity and these very sensitive areas that we also got the benefit of witnessing. Um, is there, I think you referred to um something along the lines of any planning reforms and any planning that we're looking at really needs to prioritise protecting biodiversity. Um, is that something that you're not witnessing in terms of your local community? And, and what does that look like for a, a local community?
Yes, so I, I definitely think we are not witnessing this uh to the extent that we need to be. I think that there is um a lot of legislation in place that is supposed to protect our sort of high biodiversity value areas, our wetlands, our threatened ecological communities. But I don't necessarily know that it's doing enough. And so in, to give you an example of this, uh, we've got a couple of big developments that are sitting alongside what are categorised as a state, state important wetlands. And they have the required buffer zones, which I believe is forty me- metres. Um however, what it isn't taking into account is some of the more sort of indirect impacts that are gonna happen to those wetlands, nor is it taking into account the fact that we've got a, a development site. And then within very close proximity are threatened ecological communities that, you know, potentially are going to be impacted, not just by the actual development, you know, the building, the construction, but also by the stresses of then having, you know, more people, um fertilisers, gardening, you know, all of that sort of pollution runoff. Um, which I just think we're not um, we're not planning for in a robust way. Another example, sorry, if I can just give you one other example as well is that we know that there's lots of sort of um there's been koala spotted all over in South West Rocks and we know that they're using some of that sort of like coastal dune as a wildlife corridor to, to get from one end of the rocks to the other. Uh, and what we're seeing in multiple developments is that they'll do a desktop sort of biodiversity study and they'll say, you know, they're, they're, they're not using this site to to traverse the town and therefore we don't need to retain, retain these koala food trees. And I just think when we are looking at a species that's potentially going to be extinct in the next twenty years and we want to avoid that from happening, we actually need to think bigger than they're not currently using this site and we need to go beyond that to how do we actually rehabilitate these sites to grow the population?
Thank you. And so with that, I think um you're suggesting that the system is not taking into account adequately indirect impacts, cumulative impacts, and this need now to actually be planning to recover um threatened species and endangered ecological communities rather than just protect um in some way or uh uh um, and that the system doesn't from somebody in the community that is trying to promote those values, the system is not allowing you to be successful in that. Is that kind of the summary?
That's exactly the summary, yeah. The, the, the system as it currently stands allows a lot of sort of uh desktop research and uh, you know, being compliant, but complacency is not enough if we're going to sort of have a, a world that is comfortably livable in the future um with human induced climate change as an issue.
Thank you. Can I just um now ask either Mr Weir or Dr Townley? The um, and you know, I, I I have certainly been to the area of the Coffs foreshore that we're referring to and the committee had the benefit, uh some members of the committee had the benefit of attending and hearing from you and other members of the community onsite. But it, in some ways it does sound, um, it sounds very bizarre that you have a current state government that is working, that would appear to be working um in the complete opposite direction of what the local council and what the mobilising um local community would like to see for the Jedy foreshore. Such an important public area of, area of public land for a regional city in New South Wales. Um, I think you've painted a, uh the steps of what has happened in terms of council offering alternative land, offering to purchase land, et cetera. Is there some insight you can provide to us to help us understand how these things happen? We understand what's happened, but how has this happened and what would be the motivation here to work so oppositional to what the local community appears to be saying?
Could I have the opportunity to talk to that Sally?
Oh, yes, please do.
Uh, just starting off, i- in twenty twenty, the Project Steering Advisory Committee was established by the government to bring together what they said would be a diverse range of the Coffs Harbour community representatives to provide input into the vision and plans for the revitalisation and activation of the precinct. It was not a such thing. It was, it was a monoculture. It was entirely business people from the town. There was three positions on the steering committee for community representatives out of a committee of twelve. So the community itself were given three representative positions, not five to six, as they told originally. Of these three, one was a board member of the Chamber of Commerce and one was a major sponsor of the Chamber, the Chamber's golf day. So the committee that was meant to provide steering advice, we weren't even on the bus, let alone had given the opportunity to steer it. Why the motivation, I, I can't tell you. The government kept on coming back to us and telling us, you know, we've done the biggest community consultation we've ever done in Coffs Harbour. It was a farce. Ethos Urban in their report said, uh, the, the survey was designed to only allow completion once per device or I P address. This was demonstrably wrong. My wife and I obtained the Survey Monkey data and there were eight hundred responses from three hundred and sixteen I P addresses. So obviously there was multiple uh duplications from people. The government's response was to tell us that six hundred and forty-nine responses can be reasonably considered to have been submitted from different individuals. They had absolutely no way of making that statement was true. It is purely supposition. Uh, and why did they put that statement in the report when they knew it was wrong? Death is in the report. One, one I P address, one result. Why the government has done this, we have no idea.
And so do you see, in terms of, um, so Dr Townley or, or Mr Weir, do you see? What, what would you think um is the next steps on the way forward, given um, is there a pass through this or is it an impasse or? Um, I, I did hear that council had, was suggesting it was trying to compulsorily acquire the land. Um, how do you, what do you see as the next steps for resolving this?
Sally?
Um, thanks. I'll, I'll just keep my camera off if that's all right.
Thank you.
Um, yes, that's right. So the council is uh going through the process of compulsory acquisition. So it's within the power of the local government to acquire land for um public purpose. And given that um part of the land actually already carries the zoning of public recreation, we consider that that's justified. The acquisition of these lands into the broader adjoining reserve has been identified for a long time in the plan of management process. So we feel that you know, those signals have been there for a long time, that the, the, the best use of this land is to incorporate into the parklands. The government sort of trying to acquire this land and development isn't new. This is about the third or fourth time, maybe the fifth time that successive governments have come forward um with different proposals. Um, the community has, I guess, fended them off every time it's happened. Um, it's hard to say what will happen next. We're not certain of the minister's powers of refusal in the grounds of compulsory acquisition. I suppose it's quite unusual for a local government to try to compulsorily acquire land from a state government. It's clear that the state government has already expended many millions of dollars on the project. Um, developing the concept plans and putting forward the rezoning proposal. Um, as I mentioned, nobody's seen a draft. We don't even know what zone. They're looking to try and get it rezoned to. Um, of course, there will be a period of public exhibition and consultation, perhaps even a public hearing as part of that process. You know, I just hope that we've got all these laws in place about coastal vulnerability and little rainforest and, and just to take a really um, I guess precautionary view that, I mean, I just would hope that when it goes through the assessment, um sense will prevail, but it's also quite difficult because you've got, um, it's virtually the same department who is the proponent, who manages the gateway, who then does the assessment and, you know, probably potentially stands to financially benefit. We consider that the Property and Development New South Wales has paid a very, very, very nominal price for the land. And the someone stands to make a very giant profit. Um, we've calculated the land costs from the purchase price divided by the four hundred and fifty units to be less than five thousand dollars of land cost per unit. So these are, you know, beachfront apartments. So like fifty, eighty metres from the ocean, a hundred metres from the ocean. So um yeah, it is just really difficult to, to know what's going on and, and whether the assessment will be adjudicated fairly and with due consideration to all of those um matters that we've brought up or whether the lure of the profit will be too great. It's really hard to know which way it will go.
Thank you. Um, I'm just noting the time and we, and I know that we started um late and I'm very, very sorry for that, but i- if there's an opportunity for members, if there are more questions, to submit those questions to you and the secretariat would do that. Um, and um we have a quite a short turnaround time, but if it's all right. Are there any last words that you would like to add though in terms of, uh, because we do need to finish up, but uh, Ms Kennedy, is there anything that you uh feel you didn't get an opportunity to say?
I think uh probably one thing that I, I don't know if I, I stressed is that I think that there needs to be some sort of mechanism in which we can review some of these D A's that are older than five years and that they can be reassessed with up to date biodiversity data and climate modelling and sort of all the science that we have now that we maybe didn't have ten years ago. Um, and I, and I know that is a huge ask and I, I don't even, um, I'm not gonna pretend that I even know how to start going about that, but I just think that this is something that is really important for not just South West Rocks, but for lots of coastal communities who are facing these outdated development consents.
Thank you. Um, and that's certainly something we've, we've heard evidence on consistent with that. So you're right, it's not, it's a matter that does seem to be affecting others. Um, Dr Townley, Mr Weir, is there anything you'd like to say finally?
Well, if I could just jump in there Sally, I'd just like to draw the attention to the growth management strategy that Coffs Harbour has implemented. Sally referred to that. And the council has identified eight thousand potential new dwelling units within the very close proximity to the harbour. There's been no commensurate sort of uh open, green open space and recreational areas identified to go along with that. So I draw the comparison with what you people would know down there is the Moor Park Golf Course where it's been over beside there, suddenly we've got to repurpose land for potential like that. That's what's happening here. We, we can jump in early, be proactive rather than reactive and create the open space that this community is going to need as we increase densities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, well, I, we're very grateful for your time and your evidence today. Thank you so much for your time. And the committee secretariat will be in contact with you with any matters arising from your evidence today. Thank you. Um, we'll take a short five minute break.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back. Welcome and thank you for making the time to come and give evidence today. Could I please get each witness, starting from my left with you, Mrs Cairns, to state your name, position, title, and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Yes, I'm Lynne Cairns and I'm Secretary of Yambacan, Yamba Community Action Network. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Helen Tias Tungal. I'm a past president of Valley Watch and a member of the newly formed Yambacan. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start or both of you with a short opening statement?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Thank you, Ms Cairns.
Right. Thank you for the opportunity to provide evidence to this meeting. I would like the folder previously provided to the committee to be tabled, please, along with this document as well, that I will be summarising.
Thank you.
On behalf of Yambacan, the information I provide is a summary of what has been recently occurring in the Clarence Valley Council LGA in relation to concerns with processing of development applications on the Amber floodplain. I won't be reading directly from that document because I have summarised it.
Thank you.
Helen will then provide historic information. Now firstly, it appears there is a systemic problem whereby stakeholders in the development application and planning process are predisposed to favouring approval of developments. It appears that council is inclined to accept what a developer provides and presumes in a DA without fully considering and assessing the impacts on existing residents and whether an adequate evacuation plan is in place. Now, about three-quarters of the township of Yamba is on the floodplain, a delta of nearly 690 hectares. Yamba has a population of about 6,500 people. In February 2022, Yamba residents on the floodplain woke and without warning, the only evacuation route, Yamba Road, was closed by stormwater flooding, along with many other internal roads closing or closed. From the M1 to Yamba Township is about 16 kilometres. Homes on the Amber floodplain were flooded by stormwater and some with sewage that have never been previously flooded. The Clarence River flood crest reached Yamba about two days later and inundated and flooded homes again. Last week, the Northern Regional Planning Panel met to determine a proposed development, Yamba Gardens, for a 284 small lot subdivision on the floodplain down Cars Drive, requiring more fill. Last month, in a council meeting, councillors passed a resolution voting five to two in favour of council making a submission to the panel to not support this proposed development. The resolution was based on council's assessment report that was over a year old and contained some 22 compliance and non-compliance and unresolved matters. Then seven days later, on the 4th of June 2024, council's up-to-date assessment report recommended approval of the subdivision. Councillors were not provided up-to-date assessment report for a very important decision. Submissions objecting to the development, objecting, they totalled 328 and two voted for the development. People had two weeks to review 38 documents, 1,750 pages. 12 people addressed the panel, objecting to the development being approved. The development's documents and council's assessment report provide that the proposed development complies with the required planning instruments. However, upon close scrutiny of the documents, there were anomalies, errors and contradictions and totally overlooked was the stormwater flooding. For example, council requested the evacuation plan for the development to address clause 5.212 C and D of council's local environment plan. The clause reads, excuse me, point two, flood evacuation. Development consent must not be granted to the development on land the consent authority considers to be within a flood planning area unless the consent authority is satisfied the development. C will not adversely affect the safe occupation and efficient evacuation of people or exceed the capacity of existing evacuation routes for the surrounding area in the event of a flood. And D incorporates appropriate measures to manage risk to life in the event of a flood. The evacuation plan does not address 5.212 C and D because it did not take into account stormwater flooding. The flood risk management manual recommends councils collect data and review flood behaviour after flood events to capture lessons learnt. Council did not collect post-flood data in Yamba in 2022. The plan states the development proposal will not exceed the capacity of existing evacuation routes for the surrounding area in the event of flood, yet then states the capacity of Yamba Road is the constricting factor during an evacuation. Council's assessment report, it actually says it's considered acceptable, noting capacity of the evacuation routes and warning times. And then states it meets 5.21. The plan states the flood evacuation centre is the bowling club. And then it further states the club has not been assessed for its suitability for the number of people the club may be able to support and the plan assumes sufficient capacity can be made available. This contravenes clause 5.21 and residents couldn't even reach the bowling club because the roads were closed. These developments will be isolated mound islands in flood events. The calculation of people on the floodplain requiring evacuation in the plan is incorrect. It is not 6,396, it is 8,618 people. The figures in the plan have not been properly calculated. Also, the current approved and proposed dwellings on the floodplain is not 570, it is 1,329. The plan states Yamba has an older population, 32% are aged 65 and over. One existing manufactured housing estate has over 200 residents and the average age of residents is mid-70s. The plan doesn't even acknowledge this estate and its next door to it. The estate has one road in and one road out and was cut off by flooding in 2022 and this has never happened before. The plan states Yamba experiences four peak seasons in a year with a potential population increase of more than 100%. What if this occurred with a flood? The evacuation routes won't cope. And what if it coincided with a king tide? It also states that Yamba in a flood would be cut off for two to three days and is large enough, it has sufficient accommodation, medical services and food for this period. 2022 flooding, Yamba was isolated for seven days, two days by stormwater and five days by river flooding. Coals ran out of food and closed, residents are not able to see a doctor for about seven weeks, doctors are not taking new patients, Yamba does not have sufficient accommodation off the floodplain, flooded residents evacuated to neighbours and friends' homes, toilets wouldn't flush and power was cut. Not all streets are included in the plan and there is no mention of what streets were closed. Residents are discovering they are unable to obtain home insurance or the price of insurance has become prohibitive. Now continuing to fill the floodplain and increasing the population in Yamba will increase the burden on SES volunteers in flood events. Yambacan commends SES, the work they do. At the recent Yambacan flood awareness and resilience meeting attended by over 250 residents, SES workers offered to attend a further meeting to collect data and information from Yamba residents about the 2022 flood events. Another example of a development application as well is Parkside. 136 dwellings, manufactured housing estate, 2,600 truck and dog movements. The development was provided to the Northern Regional Planning Panel in 2022, just after the floods and was deferred twice. The first time an evacuation plan was requested as the site is in flood planning area and would become isolated from escape routes and its floods adjacent properties and safe evacuation could not be guaranteed. The second, it was an independent peer review of the evacuation plan provided. The third time, it was approved and three members on the panel virtually dismissed the peer review, which stated the evacuation is divergent from state guidance and practice based on these findings. The current proposal is unsatisfactory from a flooding and emergency management perspective. There are a lot of concerns about this development which is now occurring, filling the floodplain. Overlooking the peer review is one, national parks weren't even contacted by council when the stormwater is going to be funnelled into the nature reserve. There is no consideration of stormwater flash flooding without warning and there are a lot more other concerns. What is suggested considerations reforms in the planning process? An immediate moratorium on developments on floodplains. The State Disaster Mitigation Plan 2024/26 hasten the provision of local disaster adaption plans. There is a document that's just come out recently, climate valuation, which is about, talks about the majority of homes are highly, that are highly vulnerable to becoming insurable, uninsurable due to climate exacerbated riverine flooding, uninsurable homes. And then we really should need a review of the Sydney and Regional Planning Panel's operational procedures, ensuring all DAs comply with council's LEP. Concern is that council and developers currently use the same outsourced companies to research, assess and formulate documents in relation to development applications, flood modelling and evacuation plan. Council needs to ensure accurate modelling and mapping to include stormwater flooding. Councils also need to have better community consultation and engagement as it is inadequate. And council should be required to advertise development applications and approved developments in the local papers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms Stangle, did you want to?
Yes, now I'll have my turn. Thank you for the opportunity. And after more than two decades of questioning council's decisions, being here today feels like a positive step towards seeking sustainable solutions to what is extraordinarily unsustainable situation evolving in Yamba. With more than 10 million tonnes of fill being dumped onto the Amber floodplain for medium and high-density housing development, the question being asked by an exponentially number of Kanyamba residents and visitors when they see what is happening is how has this been allowed to happen? A factual historical response is that council's planning processes over the last two decades has resulted in more questions than answers and the outcomes are visually shocking. Throughout the planning process, there has been a lack of overarching scrutiny by any authority, advantage taken of technicalities and loopholes in the state planning system and regulations, failure to implement what should be council's endorsed preventative strategies in the LEP, the DCP and the floodplan risk management plan, realistic assumptions and crucial information missing from the flood modelling, ignoring long-time and new residents' lived flooding experiences over decades and the ongoing destruction of up to seven endangered ecological communities identified identified by a comprehensive government report. Community group Valley Watch has been working hard to delve into the magical workings of local government planning over the last three decades and has produced, for educational purposes, summarised this in the PowerPoint presentation, A Brief History of Community Concerns Around the Floodplain Development in West Jambur. So, my presentation focuses on West Jambur, but we could also be looking at Park Avenue or at Orion Drive or what is the Yambur Keys Estate, which is a total other can of worms on a zombie DA. But, so it started in nineteen ninety-five with the Maclean Council commencing planning for development of West Jambur. And then in two thousand and five, a slim majority of councillors on the newly amalgamated Clarence Valley Council overturned years of planning and voted to increase the density of the proposed development, raising the target population ceiling to thirteen thousand from the eleven thousand set in two thousand and one. You may recognise some of the faces in that council, past and present MPs in this, in this government. That's just an aside. In two thousand and six, the New South Wales Department of Planning and Department of Natural Resources undertook an assessment of the conservation values of the vegetation at West Jambur in context of the proposed zone amendments for the LEP. And the assessment found overall conservation values to be high, containing or in close proximity to seven endangered ecological communities and vegetation communities of high conservation value and planning concern, including coastal salt marsh, freshwater wetlands on coastal plains and five different forest types. The assessment found that development proposals would be highly detrimental to the conservation values of a number of endangered ecological communities, would remove the largest remaining coastal, near-coastal remnant of this forest type, would likely result in severe and irreversible detrimental effects on flora and fauna, and would negatively impact on the function of the only vegetated corridor linking conservation areas to the north and south of Yambur. A comparative aerial analysis between two thousand and two thousand and five showed clearing and poisoning of vegetation. Unlawful clearing, and it's in this uncovered Aboriginal midden, archaeologically reviewed to be a burial site. CVC Director of Environment and Planning, Rob Donjies, told the media that action was being considered. Nothing happened, no action taken. In fact, the largest landowners in West Jambur, the Birik and Gargle, LALC, were totally left out of the whole rezoning process over ten years. I know this as a fact, as I was closely involved with them at the time. Some of the loopholes that have been, there was hope in two thousand and six when the new compulsory state government LEP include legislation designed to avoid unnecessary environmental impacts on flood-prone and riparian land. These include development of flood-prone land, compulsory, if it applies, acid-sulfate soils, compulsory, if it applies, excavation and filling of land, compulsory, heritage conservation, compulsory, water bodies and riparian land, compulsory. But our council staff said technically the draft West Jambur LEP as an amendment to the Maclean LEP two thousand and one is not required to comply. What does that tell us? In two thousand and seven, Valley Watchers and others formally objected to the endorsement of the draft LEP for West Jambur, detailing concerns with the site being well-known as a flood storage area, climate change predictions and cumulative negative effects on the residents and the environment. Local knowledge vehemently disagreed with council's mapping of natural flow lines and floodways as no studies were undertaken. In two thousand and seven, the Sydney Morning Herald did this article, Coming to This Swamp, Suburbia, and it quotes, even the proposal's architect, the council's environment and planning director, Rob Donjies, acknowledges it is out of step with today's planning regime. There are acknowledged problems there. It is flood-prone, low-lying land with a high water table, he said. We have never hidden the fact that if this were to start the process of West Jambur today, there would be doubts to whether council would proceed. And then the then mayor said it may be that people who are flood-proof at the moment will be put at risk. A great deal has happened since the council first decided to increase the area's yield. From the middle of last year, a great awareness of climate change issues has surfaced. It is a whole different ballgame. So, this is fifteen years ago. And again, pushing these loopholes, pushing things that haven't been completed. The council has not yet received the findings of a flood risk management plan, commissioned to examine the effects of altering the area's natural drainage corridors. But Mr. Donjies has recommended the draft local environment plan go ahead anyway. He insists the wheel has turned too far to stop now. It has a long history and commitments have been made by the council. So, of most concern to the community has been the lack of implementation of the current Yambur floodplain risk management plan and study that were unanimously endorsed by council fifteen years ago at their February twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine meeting. And it's, the YURA DCP states, why extent of any development potential is to be consistent with the final floodplain risk management plan. When asked why isn't the Yambur Fump being implemented? For years, the senior council staff, the last three years at least, have insisted this study has been superseded by the twenty thirteen Grafton and Lower Clarence flood model, et cetera. And so, these queries in relation to this study are no longer relevant. But Yambur is not in the Grafton Fump. So, now it has been confirmed that the Yambur Fump is the current legal Fump. Now, had it been implemented as intended, we could have largely prevented the huge problem currently occurring in Yambur. It recommends prior to proposed West Jambur rezoning and development, a practical method of evaluation proved by SES during the planning process needs to be in place prior to development consent. Filling for building pads within existing areas is permitted as long as it does not affect local drainage. Filling on a larger scale should only be permitted following a rigorous hydraulic environmental assessment. Council should maintain a database of filling to monitor its cumulative effects. The proposed master plan to be developed before subdivision must address water-related issues. None of these things happened. And the study also warned, any further development will exacerbate the flood hazard and the proposal is not compatible with two background reports. I'll leave out the next few things that were happening, but the, the lack of master plan, two and a half thousand signatures were collected, calling for a moratorium on, on development until it did that. Yambur, Valley Watch had to take the council to the New South Wales Civil and Administrative Tribunal because they wouldn't release the floor-level studies that were collected in twenty fourteen. They only gave it to the insurance council and to the consultant. There's one thing here that I really think that shows it in a nutshell. If you could just give people that. This is the Clarence catchment. It has fifty-five sub-catchments. And there's so much concern that the current flood model is lacking accuracy. It doesn't include stormwater runoff. It doesn't include flat, flash, sorry.
Flash flooding. Flash flooding?
Flash, flash flooding or wave motion, all of which are not included in there. And there's some modelling assumptions supposedly compatible with current guidelines and accepted best practices that don't make any reasonable sense. You can see where Yambur is here. And so, it actually says tributaries of the Lower Clarence River are only represented in the model insofar as allowing backwater flow from the Clarence River to extend into the tributary catchments. So, all of these catchments around here in the lower river include, and significant catchments, the Esk River, the Clarence Coastal, the Broadwater, Sportsman's Creek, Swan Creek, Coalstream Creek, Shark Creek and Lake Waller catchments. Eight of the fifty-five sub-catchments are assuming that there isn't going to be water coming out of them and that the flooding from the Clarence River, Birimba, is, is going to go back up those catchments. So, in conclusion, the community has been asking the same questions for fifteen years, to no avail. It's on the back page. About the fill, about the stormwater, about liability, about the master plan. At last week's NRPP assessment meeting, a Yambur resident whose home, a Yambur resident, sorry, whose home now floods during rain since the fill started coming to, into West Jambur a few years ago, asked, when my home becomes uninsurable and then uninhabitable, who is responsible? Who is liable? The NRPP's chair's response was, we can't answer that question. The planning rules must change now and there needs to be an immediate moratorium on floodplain development until things are properly sorted out with embedded physical climate risk data in all decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And both of you, I'm hoping you can make your opening statements available to the committee secretariat staff. It helps us with Hansard and the processes. We'll have some questions. And also, we have got some committee members who are participating by Webex today, so they may have some questions for you too. I, I also just put on the record now that we have had the benefit of travelling around with members of the community and some of the committee members did have the great benefit of witnessing these sites physically. And thank you for bringing us along and exposing or showing us some of those sites. Also, I would put out there that I also attended the Northern Rivers Planning Panel, the Northern Region Planning Panel in relation to the two hundred and eighty-four lots of development that's been considered at the moment. I think that it is fair to say that you've painted a very clear, detailed picture of a planning system that really just has not properly worked, that even looking at its own structures and systems, whether you agreed with them or not, I think that there is a clear picture that there's just been a failing from one document to the next, from one study to the next, and then the absence if the ultimate objective is to achieve good, sound planning outcomes that don't put people in harm's way. Is, I mean, what is your kind of view? You've painted, and I asked other witnesses, you've painted the picture of what has happened to get us where we have got there. But what would you say to, as local community, how? How, how is, how is it? Just, and I know that's a big question, but even just some inputs into how the planning system has responded the way it has and driven development to this point where people are asking those sort of questions that they're asking at the assessment meetings?
I'd just like to say something that I ran out of time for, that we, some months ago, one of the councillors put up a notice of motion to seek support from the state government to backzone the land that wasn't developed there and that, that he had legal advice, good legal advice, and apparently the council got similar legal advice. And the motion was defeated and replaced with some, so airy-fairy, I can't even think of it. But that seemed like a really hopeful situation at the time where it wasn't to the detriment of the developments that were already in place, but it was going to prevent like what was, what we're destined for in the future under the present planning regime. And so that was very unfortunate because legally, it seems that that is a possibility and the council is not liable. So, I, I can't understand why our council did not pursue that option, especially when they got their own legal advice confirming that.
Can I just say too, what Helen was saying, the legal advice that council actually got was stronger than what the councillor himself had got. So, why did that go ahead? Or, you know, not happen, I should say, the backzoning did not happen. But also, what the people of the town, what we're feeling, Yambur Can and Valley Watch, is that it's got to stop now. There needs to be a moratorium and stopping development on the floodplain in Yambur. And I know that other areas have got similar problems. People are so fearful, they are so stressed. I talk with the locals a lot. Every time we get a heavy downpour of rain, the ones who were flooded and had sewage through their homes are anxious that they cannot insure their properties now or it's too prohibitive. So, it has to stop, it really does.
And so, so you've identified there that council is not, you know, council is perhaps feeling some hesitancy or some looking state government leadership is, is it, is it a matter of absence of leadership or what? You know, in terms of, because it's, I mean, on the papers that you present and the materials, it, it really does seem quite clear that we've, we have headed in a particular direction. There is a different, some developers' consultant reports seem to suggest it's all okay. We're satisfying the requirements. But then the community and the evidence from the ground and the experience that people have lived through doesn't seem to play out.
Can I just say too, what it is? The council's LEP has been contravened for years. There's a section that talks about when you have rainfall on a property, it is not to disperse onto any other properties. That has been contravened for years. And unfortunately, we seem to have this environment now of this mentality that it's them, council staff, versus the ratepayers. And this is why we've been asking and asking, why wasn't there any post-flood data collected? And there wasn't. And this is why now SES have taken up the ball and said to us, if you hold another meeting, Sue, you were there, or Madam Chair, sorry, you were there at the Yambur Get Ready Awareness and Resilience, flood get ready. And SES were there and just asking us to have another meeting so that they can collect the data, what is there? But I mean, it's two years on, over two years on. And a lot of this data is probably gone, that people have moved on, sold up, haven't got their photos, can't remember where the flood height was on their properties or how long it stayed there. And that's what is appalling, which really should have been done.
Regarding the DA under consideration, this came from last week. The best assurance that the CVC staff have regarding the twenty-two issues of non-compliance last year is that their belief, their belief is, according to expert opinion provided in the reports from the developer, non-compliance issues have been addressed consistent with the controls for West Jambur, which are obviously inadequate for current needs. And there's something else I'd like to add that might help explain things, and I don't know whether I'm allowed to say it.
You, well, you, you have the benefit of privilege here or, you know, parliamentary. But, but, but remember, what we say at the outset is, whatever you say in here, you're not covered outside as to what happens outside.
It's factual, it's factual. So, mention the name of the planner that was, the so-called, the Sydney Morning Herald called him the architect of the West Jambur in two thousand and seven. He's also the, in the last few years, since he left council, he's the consultant for the developers. So, it's, it's been very interesting and I don't want to cast aspersions if it's, if it's not, you know, necessary. But it does make people a little bit concerned. And it does also, a lot of these things were put in place to allow this to happen, you know, decades ago. And even when we do have the LEP, like five point two-one, it's just, it's just ignored and, and, you know, expert opinions ignored.
And Sue, you heard me talking about this evacuation plan.
Yes.
That is totally inadequate. And council's conclusion of their assessment actually says, following a thorough assessment of the relevant planning controls, issues raised in submissions and the key issues identified in this report, it is considered that the application can be supported.
I also heard. I also heard, I heard that there are a lot of older residents that are living in supported residential accommodation and that any evacuation plan would be of sort of military scale if a flood was worse than the 2022 flood. And that, I heard that and found that very compelling because you do, when all of the evacuation routes are blocked, and, and let's face it, I mean, the 2022 flood had characteristics that were potentially quite generous to some of our local areas, i.e. it could have been so much worse in terms of the flood heights and flood levels when we're looking at probable maximum flood heights and so.
It's interesting though, the last flood, the riverine flood was not as bad for us as, say, Lismore. It was mainly the stormwater that came for days beforehand. But the fact that data hasn't been collected, that lived knowledge hasn't been sought like Tweed Council is to get, to get a better picture. There's a home in Golding Street where the 1974 flood mark is 78 metres, 78 metres, 78 centimetres higher than what our current flood model is. So, and, and you saw what I said about these eight lower catchments, assuming that the flood's only going to go up them and not come down them. And that came out of the SES's flood evacuation dated the 31st of May 2024, so just recent. Based on a report from BMT, they're the council's consultants as well as the developers' consultants. And that was passed on, the information was passed on by council to, according to the documents, to the SES. And it's just incorrect and none of it includes stormwater.
This evacuation plan was actually done by BMT and in their figures, their calculations, their multiplication, it's not right. It's inaccurate even in the document. And when it quotes 8,600 odd, well, it quoted 6,300 and whatever, and there is 8,600 people on the floodplain that they feel will require evacuation. How can that be possible with one road in and one road out? And you're looking at Cars Drive in West Jamba, where this 284 small lot subdivision is, one road in and one road out. The people that you were talking about in that manufactured housing estate of over 200, a lot of them, or some of them, require medical treatment from a nurse or whatever, if they've had wounds to be dressed and whatnot on a daily basis, or maybe antibiotics or whatever, they were cut off as well. And one particular fellow, old fellow, who had a four-wheel drive, actually drove through the floodwater, risked it, risked it. There was no managers on site during this event of seven days we were cut off for. And he went up to the pharmacy to get medication that people were running out of. Now, that's not good. And when council is saying, no risk to life, no substantive risks to life, how can that be guaranteed?
We really are talking about.
I've got one thing about BMT that's come out of a Valley Watch submission a few years ago, because we could not make head nor tail of their flood modelling and hydrology. There were so many omissions and mistakes. And we got to the last page of the 164-page document and that the FIA states, this report is prepared by BMT for the use of BMT's client, where this report has been prepared on the basis of information supplied by the client or its employees, consultants, agents and/or advisors to BMT for that purpose. And BMT has not sought to verify the completeness or accuracy of such information. It just doesn't give you confidence.
How do we overcome this? Because, yeah, is it a conflict of interest?
I mean, these are all matters that we will consider. We've run out of time. I just want to say one last thing and ask for your comments just very quickly. The, after the 2022 flood, both the Premier and the Prime Minister said there will be no more development on floodplanes. What's your response to that, given we're now in 2024?
Honour your commitment. Honour your promise.
It must stop. It must stop till things are sorted out. We're just heading for a disaster.
Moratorium.
It's, it's, it's really, really scary and we keep asking the council if they make, they talk about making decisions in good faith. So, you know, that's the sincere belief that they're making decisions based on accurate information. And they can't deny the information that's being given to them by groups such as Yambah Can and Valley Watch and residents' photographs and videos. It's, it's just, I can't see how anything can be decided in good faith when there's all this evidence that it's wrong.
Compelling evidence that it's wrong.
Compelling.
Thank you. Thank you both. Love you so much. The secretariat will be in contact with you if there was any matters taken on notice and thank you for tabling the documents. Thank you for your time. Ms Janine Scully, so thank you both of you, if I could, thank you for making the time. Could each of you please start by stating your name, position, title, and swearing either an oath or affirmation? Thank you, Mr Scully, we'll start with you.
Good morning, and I'm Paul Scully, as on the little name tag, and just for clarity, I have no relation whatsoever to the minister, probably way back when, but not that I know of. And we are retired Maclean residents upstream from Yambah, and we're presenting our views on what happened in '22, et cetera. Affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Ms Scully?
Hi, I'm Janine Scully. I'm a retired Maclean resident. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I'll do the honest.
Thank you, darling.
Okay. Good morning. Oh, yep, just still there. Well, this is a little overwhelming, but I'll do my best. Thank you for the privilege of being here today. 33 years ago, we built our home on flood-prone land. It was what we could afford, we were fit, young and had three children. We physically built our own house to a 100-year flood standard, so we have a high-set, double-brick home with internal brick walls. The town's main river levee, flood mitigation systems and preparedness have protected us well so far. What we didn't anticipate 33 years ago was some major goalposts changing, that a cane field in flood-prone land where the town's detention system drains into would be filled and recontoured to become a development. A horse paddock on flood-prone land next to the town's detention system could become a development that puts three metres plus of fill on it. The council would have little power to reject a DA without incurring court case and huge expense, a highway upgrade that would dump huge amounts of fill on a floodplain, and we didn't anticipate climate change. Most certainly, the insurance industry anticipates and believes in climate change as indicated by the increased premiums we are experiencing. So here we are today saying we aren't necessarily anti-development, but the situation where we have, where we, the situation we have where we live is probably best represented by the question that we all ask as locals, as locals we walk past the development. This isn't right, surely. Respectfully, could you please refer to the three images that have been, that I'll have distributed today? Sorry, a little bit of a delay here. I really feel that in this circumstance, you need to look at pictures as I actually describe what's happening to us. Just disclaimer, we do not claim to be experts. This is our understanding according to our experiences and our ability. So we're not experts, we're just saying, hey, here we are, we've been directly affected by what's going on. So on page one, it shows the northern end of Maclean, which is 15 minutes by road to the mouth of the Clarence River at Yambah. It's a small town with a largely older demographic, much older demographic. The Clarence River is the largest coastal river system with the largest catchment in New South Wales, if not the eastern seaboard. It's immense. Page two roughly identifies key features in this area. The dotted red lines are the town's stormwater detention basin and its flow direction. We understand the catchment that this basin caters for is about 54 hectares and collects significant fast-flowing runoff from the nearby hills. The solid red line is a levee that stops floodwater from the north and south entering the detention basin. It is a separate levee to the main river levee. The lighter green line outlines to some of the hills that filter runoff into that area. The orange oval is a development approved in 2006, 2007, 2015. Intensive filling and land contouring commenced in 2023, some in 2016. We're still trying to find out the engineering details for the diversion of the main drain and the two detention basin outlets. The blue oval is a potential development. The DA was withdrawn in '22, '23, but proposed three metres plus of fill and cutting out a portion of the hill. The darker green oval is a C3 conservation area, a community-valued remnant wetland area forming part of MAP's significant biodiversity corridors and wetland bird habitat connections. So page three, and, sorry, bit out of order here, page three. Page three gives a better illustration of the spread and volume of water the detention basin caters for. Please note the ponded stormwater and runoff was much larger in 2022. So that page three is 2007 and was a smaller, smaller event than what it was in 2022. That red line, as I say, is the levee that separates the detention basin from the development. So the development's on the left-hand side, that's the existing development, it's just covered in water. If you look at the 2022 picture, it'll show that they've started their filling and it's well exposed, or at one end. The other end of it, which has yet to be, have the earthworks done on it, is still well and truly underwater. Okay, so in 2022, flooding illustrated what happens when exiting downpours of stormwater and runoff is held back on the other sides of the basin levee. We, along with many of our neighbours, are really concerned that by raising land heights, removing pervious ground, filling in and diverting major drains on the northern side, that this will create a similar scenario to 2022. A second development on the eastern side would create a pinch point where water will rush through as this is, as this and the detention basin will be the lowest point and that feeds through into the town. There are so many unanswered questions, but one that only seems fair to ask, would any developer choose to live in their forever home in the areas we outlined today? In closing, we'd like to put forward the following outcomes. An existing zombie development on flood-prone land to please stop now and work with the community for better outcomes reflecting contemporary conditions. A halt on potential development on neighbouring flood-prone land until the stormwater, runoff flooding and environmental issues raised by community are addressed. Development applications to include combined or cumulative existing and potential developments in their flood, stormwater and runoff planning. The condition of local stormwater assets to meet demand, increase demand. Local stormwater and runoff impacts on a town's detention basin and properties surrounding it, not just downstream, but also around and upstream. Legislation to support council in rejecting a DA without incurring expensive legal fees and time-efficient strategies for unfinished developments gone broke, which is relevant in our situation as well. The community-valued conservation area to be utilized as an asset to be rehabilitated for positive environmental outcomes that will contribute to efficient soakage and value-adding aesthetics. Government to impose on insurance companies to provide affordable insurance, to factor in flood mitigation changes which owners make to their properties and to offer the option of no flood cover, bringing the premiums into line with other properties who are not affected by flood. Our sincere thanks to the committee for conducting this inquiry. We are grateful for the opportunity that this has presented.
Thank you very much. And could I please ask that you would be able to make a copy of that available to Hansard? Thank you very much. Can I just please ask start by just a couple of questions? One is just some clarification on your final, the final part of your statement where you were saying part one of that, the zombie DA to stop now. Were you referring to the DA in the orange and the blue circle or one or the other? I'm just.
Okay, yeah, I'll clarify that. It would be the orange one, as I say, that's underway, it's been, but it stalled.
And so with that, sorry to interrupt, is that just acknowledging that the committee, some members of the committee had the benefit of meeting with you and other members of the community and the First Nations elders? And we did get to have a look at some of the sites that you're referring to. The one in the orange, would that be the site that we saw where there, we had an interaction with a gentleman who was doing his own drainage work on the day?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that is an approved development. It's actually swapped hands at least two times, if not three times, and it's halted. So we understand that it's in financial difficulty. So we've been left with this development, unfinished development that's left, contoured the land, but left huge mounds of earth around where there's all this weeds, weeds and the like growing over it and is already causing problems for, you know, neighbouring neighbours. And yes, you're quite right.
We, I think we, just for the purpose of this hearing, we had an interaction with a gentleman who lived adjacent to that land and there was predictions of an East Coast Low or something coming our way, some heavy rain about, which actually didn't eventuate fortunately, but their forecast was heavy rain. So he was literally out there with his own shovel and matic trying to make some drainage channels because he was worried that his property would be inundated wrongly.
Absolutely. And that's, that's sort of what you do when, when we hear of an East Coast Low, and Paul's the one who does the weather watch.
Well, it's interesting, as I say, that development you were talking about, there's been at least three iterations of that dating back to 2005. And it started with 23 lots and then there was an addition to that, and an addition to that, and an addition to that. Then it was 2016, there was another amended application, I think, which incorporated, you know, more drainage stuff, which report we've never seen, but it'd be interesting to read it. Again, it would probably be one that would be suitable for the developer, I'm sure, because they seem to have a playbook that, that they follow. But, so now, when, when it got to 2022 or Janine, I can't remember, 23, the latest stage of it has stalled and stopped because they've, they've run out of money or their backers have stopped. So again, where the gentleman was shoveling out was, was trying to fix where rainwater, et cetera, would accumulate on that block because the council, I'm sure, are not in a position to do any work on it and the developers are not going to be forthcoming with any monies to remediate where it is at the stand or even complete it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just drainage issues that's caused for the neighbours, it's actually, we're in a bit of a cane toe problem area and this is extended, they've created this bund area with still water. And the local toading people, so to speak, have sort of gone, well, that's really turning that into a very massive toad breeding area. So we're left with that and nothing appears to be able to be done.
So over the years, the accumulative effect is you've had fill, 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 stalled build, stalled completion, and we are left to suffer the consequences of that, either at this stage and possibly when it gets to be completed. Now, as Janine's pointed out, there was another application to one when you were on the, on the walk. Now, as Janine's pointed out, there was another application to one when you were on, on the walk, where there was another one where they perceived they were going to fill up three metres of fill, excavate half a hill, well, that's an exaggeration, but excavate down, down there, which was, again, was going to affect it. But subsequently, that was withdrawn. And so it sits there at the present time, still as a parcel of land that potentially, depending on legislation, et cetera, going forward, could be, could be built on.
And I believe that that is still being looked at quite seriously for development.
And we're sure that, sorry, we're sure in our town that, that there's a lot of people are apathetic to what, what can happen. Because, you know, at the end of the day, you, you look at Clarence, the Clarence River and its tributaries are three hundred and ninety-four kilometres long. And it's got a catchment basin of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty square kilometres. All that water funnels down between a hill behind us and a hill over there and funnels past our town and then distributes into the basin that you saw from the lookout in Maclean, which is pretty impressive. And we've got, as far as I'm concerned, any, any truckload of fill on that flood delta is detrimental to flooding. It could be as funny because the town itself we've got is protected on one side, on the riverside for the riverine flooding, but then we've got the stormwater which accumulates inside, which has got to be pumped out and you've got to pump it out at such a rate. So when the river comes up, your outlets into the river to drain the stormwater are compromised.
And essentially what this development, this existing development does is block off, in fact, that's what's going to happen, is the main drain that goes through our detention zone goes through their property, they're going to put, fill that up with fill and divert around. So you're putting something right in the direct path of the outlet of the detention zone.
So is it your, is it your kind of submission, I suppose, or your conclusion of being so closely and long-term intimately related, in a relationship with that local environment, let's say, for want of a better description, that you are suggesting that really if we are being sensible, Maclean isn't a place that should be taking any more fill or any more development? That to do that, we would end up, like what our Yambur colleagues are saying, that we, we just.
It can't accommodate it. I mean, it's just silly, sorry, in my opinion.
Yes.
It's, it's just silly. This area of development is a soak. It's a low-lying soakage area. That's what it's designed to do. It takes in seven or eight watercourses from those hills above. When you look at those pictures, you can see this is stormwater. This is not just, this is just not riverine flooding, flooding. So it's just crazy to think that on that land, they want to put about a hundred and fifty-seven house lots. It, it just belies belief. And then to redirect the stormwater, so it takes longer to exit out of a detention basin. It's, it's like putting a dam in, in front of you, you know, it, it's putting a dam in front of a jolly detention basin. Yeah, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose they don't call it the mighty Clarence for no reason. I'm just remembering the amount of times I've heard that being described.
It's, it's big river country.
Yeah, and so in terms of that, it, like we say, fifty-seven lots, but in effect, what we're talking about is significant impacts on the hydrology because we require the fill and, and that's the, and drainage, whatever that kind of looks like.
Yeah, it's that, it's not just the fill, it's the impact on the drainage and those main drain. And when I look at the reports about the stormwater drainage, it, it almost underplays the role that these drains play that feed into that main drain. They call them an unnamed channel in some reports and it just takes in huge amounts. If you look in my submission, the, you know, previous submission, then you will see photos that indicate the amount of, of water that just pours down into that area. So to underplay by calling it an unnamed channel is just ridiculous.
And just to add to that, we, we ask when you're, with regard to these development applications and their drainage assessments by nominated companies, how current is the data? And I defer back to our Yambur colleagues here. How current is that data? It seems to me that they compartmentalise their development and once they come up with a solution for that, they just punt it downstream or drain it off to somewhere else and that's wipe their hands of it and that's job done. But there is actually one aspect to this, the, the development that's stalled at the present time is where they've created their own retention basin, is that they bulldozed a, basically which is an extension of the C-three conservation area.
It looks very much like.
And they just, they just flattened the whole lot. Now, whether the council actually, when they looked at the DA, gave any consideration to that, I don't know. But it seemed to me like it was definitely a form of environmental vandalism. And we see that everywhere, don't we? I mean, I'm speaking generally now, is that we just totally ignore the biodiversity? And that was just in one example of it.
Just on that point, and I know we're, we're coming to the, we're coming to the end of the session, but could you also just, for the purpose of the record now, when we did visit, we were in the company of Auntie Laurie.
Auntie, sorry, Lenore Parker, Auntie Lenore Parker and Elizabeth Smith.
Thank you, thank you. And there was discussion about that conservation area. And there was an incredible story about, I think it was the first ever Lions Environmental Group that had started the regeneration of the area. And there was some real concern about the loss of opportunity and the miss, you know, the miss application of the planning system to that. And you were touching on that there, Mr Scully.
Yeah, the, yeah, Lions Environmental is, is the only environmental, specific environmental group that's sort of dedicated to fauna and flora. It's a small group in Maclean that started. And I have brought some information today about that too, I must. So they were trying to rehabilitate that area or put in their bits and pieces. So there was demonstration gardens commenced. So of, for local endangered species, there's a local endangered coastal emu. And Lions Environmental have actually been instrumental in raising funds and awareness of that particular group of animals. So part of that was to have plants to show the community what, what these animals eat. So they've done that, they've, they've started that. And also koalas, koalas around our area, so that started as well. So there's been time and effort and energy's put into that and is well, well and truly valued within the community from that perspective. So we've had to halt on that, sorry, the Lions Club Environment, had to halt because part of the post-two thousand and twenty-two flood was that they have designed this concrete path to go along this, to go along the top of the levee wall. And so that has slowed everything down. They can't do anything because of that. It's not started yet, but yeah, they've had to halt everything and it's just been a real problem.
Thank you.
And there was one other thought we, we had when following on from that was the, where the DA was withdrawn for the, the land where they were going to put three metres of fill, perhaps in light of maybe changes to the planning laws, that that could actually be acquired as public land and regenerated as an extension of the C-three conservation area. I know that sounds a little bit far-fetched, but.
I actually put that to our local council that perhaps where the existing development is, that perhaps it could purchase part of that land at least and then extend the C-three and make everything work.
Because essentially that would be, in your view, the highest and best use of that land because not only would it provide those immediate community benefits, it would allow the floodplain to function as the floodplain and other, the existing development have the best chance of adapting or maintaining its presence.
Absolutely, and in this day and age, it raises awareness in a high-profile area in the town. So we, we just have belief that it's an environmental, educational opportunity as well as being able to blend it with the necessities of, the drainage necessities of the town.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much for making time and coming to here today, to Sydney, from Maclean in order to provide the committee with your evidence. It's incredibly helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the privilege.
Thank you.
Our next witnesses, we have one who is appearing by webex and I have one person, Dr Peter Ashley, who is on the telephone. And I will facilitate making sure that can be heard through the, through the microphone there. So Dr Gates, can you hear me?
Certainly, can you hear me?
Yes, we certainly can. All right, so thank you. Thank you and welcome to, to both of you, Dr Ashley and Dr Gates. And if you could please each state your name, your position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation and Dr Gates will start with you if that's okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And could you just state your name and your position title as well?
Sure, I'm Dr Gordon Richard Gates. I'm retired, but I'm also Secretary of Evans Head Residence for Sustainable Development Incorporated.
Thank you very much. Now, Dr Ashley, if you could state your name and position title?
Yes, good afternoon, Committee. Peter Ashley, conservationist. Shall I give my affirmation?
Yes, and do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Fantastic, thank you, Dr Ashley.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Peter, do you, Peter, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you, Dr Ashley.
I thank the committee for their invitation to contribute to this important inquiry. As a matter of interest, the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change in two thousand and twenty-two, said that socio-economic costs arising from climate variability and change have increased and nuisance and extreme coastal flooding have increased due to sea level rise superimposed upon high tides and storm surges in low-lying coastal and estuarine locations. The large-scale residential development proposed at Iron Gates in Evans Head, a case study in my submission, is one such low-lying coastal and estuarine location. Iron Gates has also declared bushfire-prone land. About seventy-one percent of the proposed lots, about ninety-eight of them, have a high-risk bushfire attack level or BAL, which measures heat flux exposure in kilowatts per square metre, to cause a great concern. The New South Wales Rural Fire Service recommends the grouping of rural residential buildings into clusters, which allow for the establishment of APZ or Asset Protection Zones around them. And in cases of isolated locations with poor access, such as Iron Gates, dual occupancy should be discouraged. However, the proposed lots are not clustered and the application of dual occupancy has been signalled. These factors, coupled with the about hundred and twenty lots proposed in a relatively small space, has led to the development being labelled as a sardine development or a sardine city. Iron Gates is also a sensitive coastal location, declared a core koala habitat, mapped as a regional corridor under the New South Wales Parks and Wildlife Services' key habitats and corridors dataset. Part of the site is also mapped as key fish habitat, contains SECP fourteen wetlands, literal rainforest and coastal vine thickets of eastern Australia and nine threatened fauna species, including various bat species. That concludes my opening remarks, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr Gates, did you want to add anything?
Yes, if I may make an opening statement?
Yes, please.
The community is the testbed for laws and policies and whether or not they're working. Climate change, planning law and human behaviour are inextricably linked. Failed policy and rules-based solutions may be the result of little regard for the human condition rather than the laws themselves. A failure of a law or policy may lead to false conclusion that the law is not working when it is the failure to apply the law which is the problem. Our previous submission to you with seventeen recommendations doesn't address the human element directly, but draws attention to it and how it must be included in planning law application. An invited amicus brief might be useful to give independent advice to the committee about how human factors play a role in application of planning law and what might be done to deal with compliance failures, poor decision-making and genuine engagement of a disillusioned community which has much to offer by a way of expertise. Outstanding Land and Environment Court orders were nineteen ninety-seven for the Iron Gates to remediate the fire and flood-fan land, the focus of our submission, with promises of fines and jail if not done have had no consequences. The same developer with what appears to be a phoenix company had an application for a new DA accepted by council, apparently on the invitation of the then-general Manager. Ten years later, and despite planning panel refusal and independent recommendations for refusal, the application looks set to get the nod from the Land and Environment Court. What message does that send to the community? There are three matters which I'll draw to your attention. First is no peer review process for consultant reports. This is a big problem. Peer review would force governments and developers to lift their game. Second, there must be strengthening of the public voice so it is properly heard and not just a tick-the-box exercise. The LEC made reference to lay evidence done at the kitchen table with regard to the Iron Gates case, an insult when many of us have spent years and thousands of hours providing valid professional criticisms in the public interest. Third, noise and risk issues associated with the proximity of Iron Gates residential development to the RFF's Evan Head Air Weapons Range are being ignored. Not only will residents be subject to fire and flood risk, but loud noise and dangers inherent in living close to an active practice range, which has been there since the nineteen forties with live ordnance and low-flying aircraft. All of this begs the question, how can an application for an isolated residential development with all these factors in play and set to intensify in the future be accepted in the first place? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, from what we learnt when we had the benefit of visiting the site is, and what you've just explained and what the submission refers to is precisely the, what is quite striking about this is the length of time that this development or that this area of land continues to be subject to these applications. So if we, I'm just curious, given your closeness to the issue, what do you think ultimately should have happened to prevent where we are now? And the parts of the planning system clearly have failed. if your ultimate submission is this land is dangerous for development, inappropriate for development and shouldn't be subject to development and that there are various expert reports that suggest this. What do you... Where do you see the system should have behaved or responded differently? And I'll ask that to both of you, if either of you have a view on that.
Peter?
Yes, I think Dr Gates has a view on that as I do, but I think I'll leave it to Dr Gates to respond to that question, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. It's in your hands, Dr Gates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think part of the problem relates to the LEP system itself. We've had objections for years to this particular site being developed for residential purposes. And when the 2012 LEP was being put together, we asked that there be a formal hearing, which was covered in the legislation at the time, to discuss the matter. Council refused to have the hearing. We subsequently organised a community meeting and at that meeting, all the evidence was considered, and I think it was concluded at that meeting, that this was an inappropriate place to put a residential development. We invited council to come to that meeting. It declined on the basis that it didn't have sufficient notice of the meeting, so it was unable to attend the meeting. So there was a failure to begin with. So when we actually raised this in other quarters, nobody paid any attention to it. It was as if we didn't exist. And yet we had valid long-term criticisms and there was a substantial litigation already, which said this was not an appropriate site, including litigation in the Land and Environment Court, various court orders which I mentioned in the introductory remarks, and then subsequent stuff in the Queensland Supreme Court, where an agreement was reached between council and the developer. And that never played any role in the current LEC hearing as far as we know, but we don't know what went on because so much of it seems to be secret and behind closed doors. But yet, there was an agreement that came out of those Supreme Court cases when the former company was in liquidation, which was how the land was to be carved up and it looks remarkably like a land carve-up that's going on now. And it was between council and the developer. What role that played in the current process, we don't know. So that's one area where the planning system failed us. And the other side is local government itself in the way which it treats local residents. And we have no recourse. Often we're just shut out and we can do nothing about it except take expensive steps in litigation and none of us have the resources to be able to do that. So that's probably one example of where the planning system fails. And the other side, I guess, would be where there is no attention to the expert reports which are provided to councils to make decisions and to state government. And I'm just looking, for example, at the 2014 flood planning maps which were used for Evans Head for the Iron Gates. We couldn't get two of the three reports for flood planning to examine them and to test them and it took us ages to be actually able to extract that information from council. And when I did get a hold of it, ultimately it confirmed what I already knew, that they were missing a third of the catchment, which raises the point about where is the independent assessment of these reports? Now, as an academic, if I publish something, it goes to others and they take it apart and come back to you and say, no, it doesn't work. Yes, it does work. But in this circumstance, there was no peer review and so they were operating off incorrect information. And that question comes forward to now, how correct is that information that's being used and what mechanisms are in place in planning to help us deal with those circumstances, often involving the human condition, where people do stuff which is not quite right?
Can I just ask you on that... Sorry, Dr Ashley, I'm just going to ask one thing on that, Dr Gates. When you said it took ages to get the 2014 flood planning maps, the assumption always is that, you know, we have freedom of information laws and councils in particular have obligations to proactively release material. Is there something you experienced that was not, you know, how the surface situation would tell us it is?
Well, yes. In fact, I looked it up on the SES site, the river flood planning etcetera, and I found there were three reports. I could access one and I read it and it was a summary document. I then tried to find the other two and it said, please apply to council for these reports. I then applied to council for those reports and ultimately council said, we don't have them. And I thought, well, how can you be making a planning decision about flooding if you don't have two of the three reports, the modelling etcetera? And how are you going to make an assessment of a summary document and not examine the actual original material itself? So I pressed for that and it turned out that Rouse Council, an overarching council, had that information and I finally had to go to the mayor, who was chair of it at the time, and say, why can't I get access to these reports? I eventually did, but it was all too late and well down the track. But it told me how difficult it was to get information that should be readily accessible. But I have other instances where information has been refused and I'm sure Dr Ashley will be able to inform you about that similar situation. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, very much so. Thank you. And I've got a follow-up question on that. But Dr Ashley, did you want to add anything in terms of what Dr Gates has just provided?
Yes, Chair, if that's all right?
Yes, thank you.
Going back to your question, the Iron Gates property is 100 hectares. Now, 80% of that is zone environmental in one form or another and 20% of it, only 20% of it, is zone residential. Now, I think that carve-up into the predominantly environmental zoning with a little bit left over for residential development was a result probably of some deal that was done, read those court cases that Dr Gates has detailed. Also to bear in mind is that across the other side of the river, and the river is not very wide, the Evans River, is Bundjalung National Park. Now, in the beginning, it could well have been that the northern boundary of Bundjalung National Park could have easily crept across the river to encompass the land on the other side, that is the Iron Gates property. It has been used for Aboriginal access and camping etcetera for a long, long time, before our knowledge anyway. But that gives some, in terms of zoning anyway, and the problem, of course, here was probably inappropriate zoning, but there was some compromise there to give the landowner something rather than give it all environmental zoning, which it could well have had. Thank you, Chair.
I see. So you're... I think you're alluding to the fact that perhaps what we've done here or what's happened is it has been a sort of situation of compromise rather than best and highest use and most appropriate use for the land and therefore that not reflected through the planning instruments over time. Would that be fair?
Yes, it is fair, but it also has an implication for the valuation of the property. The valuation is done on an environmental management basis of zoning, even though 20% of the property is zone residential. That affects what the developer or the owner pays to the council and also land tax. Now, I've suggested to the Valuer General, the now valuation New South Wales, that this is underpriced in terms of what this land contributes in land tax and council rates. They have agreed in principle and they are looking, waiting to see what the outcome of the Land and Environment Court case is concluded on Friday last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, can I just go back... Sorry, yes?
So, Madam Chair, if I could just add something, is that okay?
Yes, please, do.
To do with the Iron Gates property itself, it's interesting if you go back 20 years, National Parks and Wildlife actually asked for the Iron Gates property to be incorporated into the national park because you've got Bundjalung National Park, as Dr Ashley has indicated, you've got it to the south and you've got Broadwater National Park to the north. So it was a corridor that joined up the two properties. National Parks was refused on four separate occasions for acquisition on the grounds that there was no money. But it is a wildlife corridor which has been identified and it has a number of Aboriginal cultural properties and there are Aboriginal properties under native title all around the Iron Gates itself. There have been other attempts to acquire it. In fact, I made an application to the Biodiversity Conservation Trust and they declined to take it up because of it being subject to legal matters and so on at the present time. I also met with the State Cabinet Secretary on the 30th of April 2002 when the State Cabinet visited Evans Head to announce the Evans Head aerodrome being put onto the state heritage list and I asked that it also be acquired for national parks, to make that corridor and to be used as a site for Aboriginal folks, for training and learning and also for some eco cabins, but with a lot of constraints on that. So it's not that we haven't tried to actually get it acquired and put to a higher and a more appropriate purpose, but it's just failed repeatedly and I'm not always sure of what the reasons are. But there is this enormous push for development and none of it takes account of the fact that we're already past the carrying capacity of the land and you just only have to look at the state of the Richmond River, which feeds into the Evans River by the way, and what a sewer line it is and we're not taking account of any of those variables and looking at what it is that we're doing. And that's a tragedy of the commons which is being played out and it's a really sad state of affairs. Thank you.
Just on that, going back to an earlier point that you made around the 2014 mapping and that they were not, you know, there was not sufficient data available to councils in real terms to make the best decisions about what we were doing in terms of the LEP and the zoning and so on. Do you think therefore, I'm just thinking aloud here, is it because council staff, when they are assessing DAs, rather than relying on their own materials, it is a case-by-case relying on the developer's consultant reports and that's the kind of fallback system? And if that's the case, and that's your experience, do we then... Is that how we literally come about failing by implementing strategic planning?
It could be the case. There was a bit more to that story which I didn't tell you about and that is that I actually discovered that there was the missing catchment before the actual plans were approved through my own research. And I raised that at the time and I was told by Rouse Council that they would fix the problem. It didn't happen. Council knew that as well. It didn't happen. So there's a failure going way back and it's kind of like talking into the wind and some occasions and I'm not sure how you correct that problem. It's as if we don't exist. I'm not sure that answers your question.
Yeah, no, no, that's helpful. But I suppose... And so then, is it the case in relation to the current application? So sorry, just to be clear on the current application, it was refused by the planning panel and it's now in the Land and Environment Court and that hearing has been heard. Is that correct?
That's correct. It finished, as Dr Ashley indicated, last Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, it is based on more recent flooding information, but I have yet to examine that critically because it doesn't cover the entire area. It says that and of course, the criteria that council sets for what's acceptable and what's not acceptable is very conservative and doesn't take account of what's happening here with this climate change really ramping up dramatically. If you read the latest literature, it's not a good look. So I'm worried about this new stuff being out of date.
Yeah, and so in that context then, the materials that the court is relying on at this point, they are the consultants' reports, the private proponents' consultants' reports. Is that correct?
That's correct and we have seen them. They were dumped on us for the latest iteration last November. I think 2,300 something pages of consultants' reports and we had 28 days in which to reply, which is truly remarkable when developers have had years to put it together. And they have relied in the Land and Environment Court hearings on those, but it's all done behind closed doors where the consultants come to some agreement about whether or not they approve something or not. So they line up on the things they agree with and the things that they don't agree with. But we're not privy to that. We're not privy to the statement of facts and contentions that are going on in the court because the solicitors, in this case representing council, refuse to make those documents available to us. Now, I only discovered just at the end of the trial that in fact, if I applied directly to the court, that those statement of facts and contentions can be made available. But I want to know why council's counsel is refusing us access to critical information here which will allow us to assess the quality of the consultants' reports and the agreements that they reach because often they are problematic and do not take account of information in decision theory or current literature. So for example, to do with this development, they're talking about shelter in place, something which I don't believe the state government has signed off on yet. And there's a whole literature devoted to that and the human factors which are involved in it, which are not addressed anywhere by anybody, including the bushfire people. And there could be any agreement that's been made about acceptance which do not take account of the human factors and all, but we don't know. And it's like the laypeople, we're treated as if we're dummies. We're not dummies. We have professional backgrounds and history and bring a lot of experience. And I don't mean that to sound arrogant, but you know, it's kind of this binary system. If you're an expert, you count, but if you're not a qualified expert in quotes, then it's as if you count for nothing. And we've got to do something to break down that binary system so that the experience which is in a community is acknowledged. And it's, you know, I've seen lots of consultants' reports where they actually have not been out in the field to look to see what's going on and it's truly remarkable. I just think of one example where a consultant came up with a report saying, these are the water flows etcetera. When we checked it out, they were in the opposite direction to what the consultant said and they'd never been out and done the necessary measurements. So that's why we need more scrutiny and visibility of the information being available to the courts to make decisions. And I think there needs to be a review of some of those processes.
Yes, please, stop that.
Chair, I can't see anybody. I can only hear.
No, no, please go ahead.
Look, just on the subject of these expert plans etcetera that Dr Gates has commented on, the public has had only access to the plans that were submitted to the court to do with the notice of motion to amend the plans on the 30th of November last year. It's now, as one would appreciate, over six months later. I've tried and others have tried to get these plans, but they've been denied. For example, on the 1st of May, there was a hearing at the Land and Environment Court at which 28 new pages, A3 pages of plans were tendered to the court. There's been many other changes made since the 1st of May, particularly in the last two weeks, which was the two weeks of the trial. And these are all plans we know, the public know nothing about and they're all arrangements made between the consultants and the parties, their legal teams etcetera. And the public have no access to these new plans. So that I believe that the DA that was lodged and which the plans at the 30th of November applied, probably no longer apply, but we don't know. In fact, from what we're picking up from the court process the last two weeks is it's almost probably construed as a new DA. And that's a real problem, this communication to the public after the DA having been in process now for nearly 10 years.
So is it both of your, in that sense, are you both suggesting that the community is being locked out or is not being as involved as it ought to? And that, from your experience, that actually manifests in worse outcomes or less informed outcomes when we're talking about the public interest?
My opinion, Dr Ashley, yes, yes is the short answer. Thank you.
Okay, look, we have come to the end of the session. I know that we have been running a little bit late. Are there any final things either of you would like to add?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
Briefly. Look, obstacles to change needed here include, as you probably appreciate or the committee would appreciate, bureaucratic inertia, the business as usual approach, which is a big one, the development lobby which is another big one and the political will which is also another big one. And look, the whole sorry saga of Iron Gates over 30 years now deserves and demands its own inquiry, I believe. Thank you.
It certainly reflects a very good case study. Unfortunately, we've got so many of them that it seems to have appeared. Dr Gates?
Well, I agree with Dr Ashley that this is really a zombie development that should have been knocked on the head a long time ago. As I see it, there are major problems with the planning system itself before you ever get to the overlay of climate change, which is a whole domain in its own right which is not getting the attention it deserves. And it seems to me, the thesis that the human factors are major players in all this, which certainly Dr Ashley has alluded to and we've certainly alluded to, need to be taken up. That's why I suggested that perhaps the committee might like to think about an amicus brief which got professional advice about the psychological and related components of what goes on with all of these processes, as has happened elsewhere, and I think could be extremely useful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both very much for your evidence and for giving time today. The secretariat will be in contact with you if there's any matters that were taken on notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Committee.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll take a break and we will return at quarter past one.
Okay, thank you and welcome back and welcome to our next witnesses and I thank you for making the time to give evidence and note that you are online. Could I please get each witness to state their name, position, title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation and Mr Barry we'll start with you please.
I see.
I apologize, I apologize, it's Mr Barry, this is a session with you attending, so thank you, if you could start, that would be great.
You're welcome, so my name is James Barry, I'm an ecological interpreter for Save Wollam. Sorry, what were the other things that were asked?
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Sorry, I'm just trying to find it.
No, no problem. And if...
It was in the email, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if it's any help, I can read it for you, with you, I can read it out.
That would be a great help.
Okay, great. So, all right, so if you want to just repeat after me. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. So, Mr Barry, would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Love to.
Thank you.
In the case of Wollum, clause 34A certificate under the Biodiversity Conservation Savings and Transitional Regulation Act of 2017 has been issued and resultantly has cost the community and the developer a lot of time, money, worry and effort. If the 34A certificate didn't exist to reanimate laws that have been repealed at the expense of current laws, it wouldn't be able to cause the divide at expensive trouble that it has. We as a community have become alarmed to discover the inadequacy of the proposed offsets, legitimate under the clause 34A, and the erosion that this loophole has had on our planning laws. The zombie nature of this proposal has insulated it from the proper protections for threatened species and sensitive habitats. This situation has entrusted a developer with stewardship of threatened species that they have repeatedly harmed on the site, and ecological consultants have provided evidently tailored data to suit a development proposal's approval over threatened species conservation. It is incomprehensible that the NRPP who approved the DA and issued the clause 34A could have been unaware of the many aspects of this development that have not been satisfactorily assessed. There is nothing satisfactory about the biodiversity impact assessments that have been made in ecological reports of this DA. The offsets are afforded to only three of the 22 threatened species on the site and are not based on an accurate species distribution data. They're woefully inadequate for threatened species conservation and they're not established methods with longitudinal precedence, nor are they best practice. But rather, they are experimental and temporary relative to intact natural habitats. And therefore, it is not guaranteed into the future that this measure will be successful. All proposals for purchasing off-site offsets were rejected by the Director General of the Planning Department as being not representative of Wollum, as it is so rare. This triggered the proposal of onsite offset arrangements such as the artificial frog ponds. It was then spun that Wollum is degraded land that they will rehabilitate and ecologically enhance, and they minimise and grossly underrepresented the true extent of the Wollum frogland habitat. As pointed out by the Director General when he recognised it actually comprised 12.29 hectares of the site, but this went in heated and was never updated. Wollum was set to be rezoned in 2008 as E2, E4 and R2 in the Byronshire Council draft LEP, but that was blocked by the developer when they lodged the concept plan at the last minute to prevent the zoning being completed. Wollum became a Part 3A major project under the EPNA Act. Part 3A major projects have since been repealed. Its repealed status reflects its legacy of failures, revealing it was insufficient in upholding the values it is meant to uphold. As the Part 3A major projects has been repealed, any DA under that repealed legislation should be reassessed under current legislation. There's a democratic obligation to meet the current expectations of the community. We recommend the BAM system under the BC Act as it is more rigorous, requiring a BDA and improved assessments. It should be the minimum standard and all projects under the clause 34A certificate be stopped and reassessed under the BC Act immediately. Wollum contributes a deep cut to a much wider story of extinction risk in the state. As we know, Wollum is one of many such historically approved projects, and together they cause great harm to our environment.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr Barry. And I just note that we did have, committee members did have the benefit of attending the Wollum site and meeting with members of the community and members of the First Nations community and had the benefit of receiving that direct communication and connection with the site and those members of the community. Can I just ask, there's something that I'm aware of. Obviously, from coming from the Northern Rivers, it's impossible not to be aware of the community resistance, for want of a better term, on the ground in relation to the Wollum development. But part of that, as I understand it and have been part of, was writing to the New South Wales Planning Minister to try to engage the Commonwealth environmental law through the New South Wales Planning System as well. Are you able to just tell me what's kind of happened there and what the response to those pleas from the community that the Planning Minister engage the federal minister under the planning system?
Thanks, Sue. So, yeah, we put quite a bit of effort as a community into engaging the New South Wales Planning Minister, Paul Scully. He eventually looked at the case and, yeah, after quite a bit of advocacy, even having the mayor write to him as well, he replied essentially that councils have an ability to stop these zombie DAs and they should do so. And he hasn't provided us yet with anything meaningful in terms of his willingness to refer the project on to Tanya Plibbisek, the federal Environment Minister. So that's quite disconcerting, given that this week we'll quite likely be back on the frontline again trying to stop contractor entry to the site. Because the wheels continue to be in motion and we continue to lack that critical support from the parliamentary level.
Thank you. And so it's your understanding that, so your advocacy to the Planning Minister is because he's uniquely positioned to refer a project to the Commonwealth Minister for Assessment under the Australian environmental laws, when a proponent doesn't refer the project themselves? Is that, is that your understanding?
That is my understanding. And we've lobbied the proponent to refer themselves and they've refused that. We've lobbied that from multiple angles. We've lobbied Tanya Plibbisek as well in her office. And, yeah, my understanding is that Tanya Plibbisek herself is also not accepting that responsibility. And her requirement appears to be that the state environment, sorry, the State Planning Minister, Paul Scully, make that referral to her.
So it's...
Then she would act.
I see. And so the community now has found itself in a, for want, again, want of a better term, an advocacy conundrum. You're appealing to the people who have the legal power to undertake, to make sure that this development proposal is examined by the Australian Threatened Species Laws or biodiversity conservation laws, but nobody who holds that power is willing to exercise that power. Is that, is that, that's correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And it's been correct for the last nine, almost 10 months now.
Thank you. In terms of your statement just now, that, you know, things are, the wheels are turning and things are hotting up and there's likely to be more resistance on the frontline. What has the experience been to date? Have there been, there's been people arrested? Do you have any even rough figures around what that looks like? What's the community cost at the moment?
The community cost has been enormous. There are a great deal of people who've given up a lot of agency in their own lives in order to exert that agency onto the Wollum protection, simply because they believe in it so much, they're concerned for the threatened species, concerned for what is indigenous sacred land, and concerned for the local community and what it means that a place like this can be subject to loopholes in planning legislation and then therefore subject to destruction. I think there's been something to the order of 22 arrests. There's been a repeated arrest. There's been targeting of certain members in the community who've been vocal about their protection by police, even someone being visited at their home and arrested for a fine, for a trespassing fine. So these, yeah, this, this approach appears to be requiring some sort of parliamentary input and it's not getting it because the community is now taking up that protector role. And the community is just not resourced to do it. A lot of us have given up so much from our normal lives, from the lives that we need to upkeep and from our families that we really shouldn't have to do because we're doing that because the system's not protecting in this case.
And so, on that, you mentioned the mayor had written, the mayor of Byronshire Council had written to the Planning Minister. What is the situation with Byron Council? I mean, I have some insights, but for the purpose of this committee, and I know we did meet with the deputy mayor on site and we heard from her when we visited Wollum. But in terms of council, how does it work? Are we looking at a council that doesn't want this development to go ahead or doesn't think it should? Or could you just explain to us what has happened?
Yeah, of, of the councillors on staff, I believe that the mayor and all but one of the councillors have condemned the development and condemned its legitimacy and said that it wouldn't pass if it was given to council, if it was put through the local DCP, if it was put through the normal processes of local approvals. And so it's quite concerning that it's gone through this process with the NRPP and it's been, in a sense, taken out of the hands of the local people. So, yeah, the mayor's made it quite clear that this would never be approved if it was on his desk. And it's caused a lot of political division and political difficulty on the ground. So, along with the resources of putting time and energy into this, there's also the divisiveness pitting the community against contractors, against the developer, against the councillors, against one another when it comes to the difficulty of these decisions, that they feel bound and confounded in, in different ways. And that's then leading to complexity and difficulty in understanding the decisions that councils then have to make when they get into a situation where they've got to administrate the steps in an approval that's been pushed through on a state level because of the way that the Planning Department and the NRPP have handled this proposal and its DA.
And in terms of the, the NRPP, is that, so were there Byron councillors on the NRPP?
There was Simon Richardson, the mayor of, the former mayor of Byronshire Council is on that NRPP panel. And he was one of the, along with Anthea Sargent and a handful of others, approved the Wollum development. He did so without visiting the site. And he also did so, having been the mayor during the time when the concept plan objections were lodged by multiple expert ecologists back in 2012 and 13. So he would have seen all of those lodged objections. He would have been well aware and had an understanding of that and yet didn't go and visit the site in his duty as someone on the panel of the NRPP and was, yeah, elected to that panel by some of the other councillors.
Thank you. And in terms of, just in terms of the, what's occurring? So, sorry, the, the development itself, what is the actual development for? This is a housing development. Could you just give us a context? I mean, is this part of Byron Council's, you know, bringing housing on because we need more houses? Or where does it fit within a housing needs framework?
So, in the context of, of the cost of this housing, the location, and in the context of the, the draft plans that council has in place at the moment, the only look in that this place has in terms of a housing option is that it's a long time ago been rezoned. So that, that 08 rezoning that was, that occurred because the developer applied for the concept plan to be put in place right when the drafting for the site was being put in for more conservation value for the site in terms of the zoning. Those sort of things put things, yeah, put zoning in place that meant that it was very difficult to repeal. The concept plan seems to be a very difficult and overriding thing. And again, that's under that Part 3A, the major projects issue, which we have contention with. And so, in terms of providing a meaningful opportunities for housing, it doesn't really cover that base when there are a lot of other housing options that are on land that maybe contains weeds, maybe it's denuded farmland, which there's a great deal within the Byronshire. And, yeah, it's out of the flooding zone as well. So this is on flood liable land. It's on high bushfire risk land, which also risks further land clearing to the surrounding bushland of, of that area, should, should fire at which it will enter that area. And, yeah, it just seems to be an out of touch with local values proposal. And that has been shown to be the case in that the vast majority of people that are very active in the Save Wollum campaign are victims of the affordable housing crisis, are victims of the flood crisis. Some people have become homeless or are now in modular pod accommodation in order to cope with the dislocation they've had from their homes as a result of the flood. So we're in a, a situation where by, by action and by virtue of who and how these people are, they're showing that this is not a project that is meaningful for housing. This is not a project that's meaningful for the community. It's out of touch with the community.
Thank you. And so in terms of the, could you just elaborate a little bit more? When you said the offsets that the proponent had proposed for this development were refused and that the, or not approved, let's say, or by the Secretary of the Department of Planning, and that all offsites and now, or the offsites are now required to be provided on the site? What does that look like? And, and why, why are you and other members of the community, in the scientific community, why are you not satisfied with what the proponent is suggesting? Because my understanding is they're saying that threatened species under their plan will be better off than they currently are.
They are saying that. They're saying it'll be an ecological enhancement. So they did attempt in the past to use five different other properties as offsets that they could purchase to offset the uniqueness of Wollum, but they couldn't find a property that actually had similar values ecologically. So that got rejected by the Director General. And so then they've come along into this space of doing the onsite offset. So that looks like, for the most part, artificial frog ponds. It looks like temporary nesting box measures for some of the nesting animals. It looks like planting saplings for some of these big old trees that are on the site. And it really only covers three of the 22 threatened species and it really actually doesn't cover them at all. It's pretty, pretty dismal from an ecological perspective. And it, it appears to be an option that's being put in place that can just sort of greenwash over the, what is a very simply, very effective ecological system in and of itself. So, on a scientific level, what we're looking at here is acid frogs, threatened acid frogs that live in these very specific ephemeral pools that rely on the coffee rock substrate that's underneath the soil. There's a thin sandy surface and the coffee rock takes thousands of years to develop with peat moss and sand compacting over time. And that coffee rock's quite well established there. And every time it rains, you get quite a bit of water filling up in the space and the water will sit there more than it sits anywhere else in, in the surrounding areas. And while it sits there, it starts to change colour as the coffee rock starts to stain it, creates an acidic environment that's specific for these frogs. So they can't compete with other frogs and with toads when they don't have this coffee rock filtration and acidic infiltration into the water. So the coffee rock's holding that water. It's slowly making its way down into the shelving of the coffee rock, then moves laterally, then sinks again, makes its way slowly towards the creek. In the meantime, it supports those acid frogs. And the proposal for the artificial frog ponds looks like literally the digging of a hole in the ground with an excavator. And there's three such ponds on the site already that have been put there as trials the last few years. And the frogs, the threatened frogs won't go near them. They are populated by toads. They are populated by rocket frogs, but not by the threatened frogs, stressed acid, threatened acid frogs. So they really need this specific kind of water body with this specific moss that lives in it, the sphagnum moss. And all of that takes a very long time to establish. Then on top of that, there's the wildflowers that surround it and amongst that, the surface water that pools. And that surface water will... And that surface water will, at any given rain event, it will fill up those deeper channels that the frogs breed in. And then it will spread out into the surface water areas that are not being recognised in the plans, proposals or management plans at all. And that is a foraging area, but also it feeds the water and acidifies the water as it makes its way back to the central areas that have the deeper depressions where the water gathers for a longer period of time. So those external surface water areas aren't being considered. And instead, and also the trees around aren't being considered, which is where the female Wollum sedge frog lives. And in in the non-consideration of that, it's being proposed that it's enough to dig these ponds out, these artificial pond structures, which is again a hole in the ground, and that the frogs will just magically jump into those. We we question their ecologists on that and and they really did say, have been really clear that they just expect the frogs to just hop into the new ponds that they would dig with machinery. There's no threatened species translocation plans. And even if they were successful in getting whatever number of frogs in there, they're not going to survive long and tenuely because they don't have that surface water external area that they need. They don't have a decent buffer from the development proposal footprint. And it it would be quite serious for those those threatened species, likely to lead to a local extinction. There isn't any precedent of success for these frog ponds. There is no longitudinal precedent for success, unfortunately.
And we're talking, just for the, for clarity, the frog, the Wollum froglet that we're speaking of, that is the nationally listed threatened species as well as a state listed threatened species?
The Wollum sedge frogs nationally and state. And it's, it's the most vulnerable of the frogs on that site in that it it lives there in lower numbers. I did find it on the site in a location that the assessors from the developers, paid ecologists, consultants didn't find it and had to show them that. They reluctantly saw it, I don't know that they lodged that. So it's in more locations than it's been mapped as being in. In, because of the concept plan, which then refers to the 2011 JWA ecological reports, the Wollum sedge frog isn't surveyed or mentioned at all. So it's not included any of those reports. And there's a state listed Wollum froglet. And its habitat has been, in in terms of area, has been quite severely minimised relative to what it actually is. Even the Director General said, no, it's like over 12 hectares of space here that that this frog relies upon. And we've seen that across the site. We've seen that in the developers' own BDR, which because of clause 34A, they were able to throw out this biodiversity assessment report, which was done in 2022, that again mapped the the larger area. So that's what would have been used if the BC Act, Biodiversity Conservation Act, was the the used legislation here instead of the repealed legislation through the loophole. So, yeah, it's, it's concerning.
And so I think, I mean, I feel like that you're painting a picture here of a system that is running, a a planning system that is running parallel to the reality of the knowledge, the local knowledge and the scientific knowledge about the site. So you've got a system that is saying, well, and I suppose that's a consequence of the fact that this is a, an unusual character of a zombie DA. It's a slightly different zombie DA, but in essence, it was still more or less working on an approval that happened back under Part Three A, which has been repealed, that had a savings provision. And in essence, there's still no development on the land, even though this is going back over a decade. And what I'm hearing is there's all of this new knowledge and about the ecology and, but that's not really able to be integrated properly into the planning system. And if anything, the system's shutting it out. Is that a fair enough characterisation?
That's an amazingly useful characterisation, yeah. I would totally agree with that.
And so just on that, in, going back to the, going back to the social dynamics and, you know, the, what you, I mean, there are police resources being deployed, there's people being arrested. And there's now, and as I understand it, the site is guarded full time by security guards. But there is this determination by the community. Has there been any signs of how how this could be resolved differently? Have the community come forward? Like, what, what, what is the kind of vision for, from a locally driven perspective? What are some of the views?
Yeah, there's quite a few views. So at its most ideal, the site would be preserved as a wildflower reserve and there would be fiistic farming practices by the local indigenous people that would support the Wollum ecology. There is groups that have come together under the banner of Save Wollum who are looking at what it would take in order to purchase the land. There are a group, there's a group that's formed within the community as well that is looking at what it would mean for there to be acquisitions, through community-led acquisitions, that would involve the government and would involve offsets for wider projects. So there's these creative ways that are coming into the space that aren't just deleterious of the developer and their investment. The developer has made it clear they would sell the site for a cost, they would like it to be off their hands. For them, it's a great, it's a great hassle, it's cost them quite a bit already, obviously, in security and fencing and the difficulty of that. And a great deal of police resources has gone into that. And we experienced such a strange representation of crime in the Northern Rivers. And also, yeah, we've got quite a few missing persons at the moment. And none of that is being solved or or resourced adequately in terms of police resources. And yet, for whatever reason, they're certainly showing up for this Wollum protest opportunities. So there's, there's that concern within the community as well, and it's been vocalised quite a few times. Why are police resources going in to this when it's community standing up for the environment? Why isn't the government stepping in for this to be seen properly? There's legal options as well that have been sought, but it costs so much money. So again, that onus and the onerousness of that's on the community in order to raise $50,000 to get ecological reports done in order to get an injunction represented in the courts. There's a great deal of money that goes into that stuff and that's hard on the community.
Thank you. So, look, our time has come to an end. Are there any final things you would like to say, Mr Barry?
Yeah, I'm really encouraged that this, that this inquiry is occurring. It's really helpful for us to have this issue looked at on this level, on this parliamentary level. It certainly helps us all gather our thoughts around it and consider that there are parliamentary opportunities for input and intersection into this issue. And it's very disappointing that that seems to have failed us again and again, but the the resolve is quite strong because the care for this land is quite strong. We would like to see those Wollum froglets and Wollum sedge frogs and koalas and glossy black cockatoos and coastal planning gales and square-tailed kites and all of the threatened species and all of the species that are quite enigmatic and totemic as well to the local indigenous people. We'd like to see all of that preserved if we can and an alternative be floated for the developer, whether that means they they get a buyback in another site or a land swap or something like that. That's something we wish the state government to take up. We certainly would like Paul Scully to advocate for the referral of this development and consider it being, the the site being rezoned. It's quite a significant site for us ecologically. And it's the last of its kind in Brunswick Head, so we really don't want to lose it. So we appreciate the interest in this, in this issue and really appreciate how Wollum is just one of many of these deep cuts into the biodiversity of our coast and our state. And we'd really like to see due diligence done. And any of the proposals that are under clause 34A or under Part Three A, any of those proposals that use repealed legislation to to be thrown out and reassessed under appropriate legislation that's current and more representative of the community's values.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and for presenting your evidence today. The committee secretariat will be in contact if there's any further questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you for coming in today and giving evidence. Could I please get both of you to state your name and position title and swear either the oath or affirmation? And whoever would like to go first?
Thank you, Chair and members. I'm Stephen Wareham, live in Cardiff, New South Wales, in Lake Macquarie, LGA. And I'm the president of Save Mile Road Bushland Incorporated, just a small community organisation we set up specifically around this development proposed by Landcom. I'll take the oath by swearing that I, the evidence I give now and about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Blaine Wareham. I'm Stephen Wareham's daughter and, um, what's all I have to say?
Yeah, yeah, a member of the group.
I am a member of the group as well.
Fantastic.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you both so much. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
So Save Mile Road Bushland, it's a group of about 70 members at the moment. And we held a roadside protest there a couple of years ago and we had about 200 people come along. That's about the extent of our group. We have other supporters, we've got various petitions that we've run where we've had thousands and thousands of signatures and things like that. But basically, it's just a group that was specifically set up around this proposed development that's a zombie development from a DA from 2013, but it has links back to provisions from 1984.
Wow.
So Save Mile Road Bushland, thanks to committee seven members for welcoming, welcoming submissions on this important environmental and community matter. And we look forward to recommendations from your work and the advice that you provide. We call it smurby, so I'll just use that term as we go throughout. Our comments relate to experiences while seeking to protect and retain the bushland off Mile Road Cardiff in Lake Macquarie area. The proposed development is by the proponent Landcom. And interestingly, in our discussions with most parliamentarians, the nature of, you know, the dire situation with the housing scenario, it's a wedge issue for them, is what my assessment is. Their concerns about not wanting to be seen to, preventing a development that's providing housing going ahead whilst at the same time considering the environmental factors. So we'll talk a little bit about that today as well. And feel for the politicians in that situation, trying to represent the whole community. So the community and the environment, from our opinion, are being negatively affected by the New South Wales planning system in that it's resulting in continued loss of biodiversity, of habitat, green spaces, impacting community wellbeing and diminishing faith in the planning and consent authorities' processes. I know this time should be dedicated to what we think, but I think it's important to reflect greater thinkers than ourselves in that sense. And when Dr Henry, Dr Ken Henry was presenting the final report of the review of the New South Wales Biodiversity Conservation Act, which I'm sure you're familiar with, Dr Henry said, biodiversity is not being conserved at bioregional or state scale. The diversity and quality of ecosystems are not being maintained. We must commit to nature positive approaches, which I'm sure you're hearing that term a lot. The fact of humanity's dependence upon the quality of biosphere in both social and economic dimensions is immutable as the laws of physics. The case for giving primacy to environmental repair is inescapable and our future actually depends upon it. I think we all agree on that aspect of it. I know it's, may seem like a motherhood statement, but what we've done is we've devised systems and have systems in place that are actually working against that. I think those comments, they succinctly explain the way people in our group feel and some of the disillusionment in that. And that imperative need to protect the community assets is is fundamental. So it's not a one-dimensional aspect where housing is the result. In fact, this development, which I'll mention to, I'll go into it now, proposed development of Mile Road, it impacts 38.8 hectares of land with a plan to clear fell 12 hectares that has protected species within it, both threatened and vulnerable. The development is for 66 standard lots with three superlots and only a total of 105 dwellings. So it's, it's not a very big development. And it offloads the responsibility of crown land management to the local government and others, which is a separate interest of mine, hoping that crown land can be preserved and managed appropriately rather than seen as an opportunity to, they're seeing a local government context, people transferring community land to operational land so they can dispose of it or use of it in their own means, not personal benefit means, but the council's means. In this case, crown land's being disposed of to find other managers for it to reduce their sort of burden. And there's a perverse incentive because crown land gets 50% of the benefit financially from this development and Landcom gets the other 50% of the of the benefit. This project has never had an environmental impact statement undertaken, never been referred to the most relevant staff in New South Wales Department of Planning and Environment. The project DA was lodged in 2013 and went on a state significance because it was over the $5 million threshold. And so therefore, the Hunter Joint Regional Planning Panel assessed it. And it took them seven years to provide a conditional approval in 2020. And that was without the promised stewardship agreement that Landcom was meant to put in place for the offset. Of course, in our opinion, we feel they erred in their decision and we're sort of arguing what the things that they missed in that. The development benefits from those safe provisions I remember mentioned before, like the LEP from Lake Macquarie from 1984, where it was potentially reserved for housing going forward in some context. So we'd suggest it's unreasonable that using these dinosaur provisions to consider a current development. And I'd encourage you that if you're buying a house or a car in the near future, to not purchase something with the safety in considerations or the design considerations of 1984, which we're being asked to accept, and that you should look for the standards of 2024 in that protection. And that's what we should be doing with our environment. We have requested to anyone we possibly could about cumulative impact statements. Site-specific assessment does not provide the overall insight into the impact of a development. And certainly, we'd expect Landcom as a state government-related entity to be able to, be able to undertake a cumulative impact assessment. And we have significant other developments happening in this area. The interesting part about that is developers get to, through their, as the proponent, get to justify their development by highlighting the other bushland that is around a particular area. So not stating what is planned for that area or knowing what's happening in that area. They can usually say, there's this aspect here that can, will be kept or may be kept or exists now. So they can use provisions or argue that they can justify their development in the fact that there's other bushland, but we can't justify that other clearing's happening in other areas for a site-specific development. So when this was submitted also, the development said there'd be an off-site offset. Landcom worked for four or five years to try and find one, did not find one. They've now decided it's an onsite offset that will be happening. So they're going to clear 12 hectares and retain about 26 hectares supposedly through a stewardship agreement. My argument's always been that, and please don't take this seriously, it's similar to saying to someone, you have three, three children. We're going to take one of the children away and you should be happy that we're going to promise to protect the other two children. I mean, the problem with that is you don't even get to choose which child they're going to take. I say that having four children and one of them being here today. But basically, their assessment is they want to clear fell that area rather than protect the whole area through the process. And that's what our concern is, that there's a net loss. Net loss is net loss. You can't promise to protect something when you're taking 12 hectares away. We say the development proposal is inefficient, as I said. Some lot sizes are up to 900 square metres. So we believe in a more densified development, which seems strange for what we're saying from an environmental point of view. Here we are, locals who financially will probably benefit from the development in our area, but we're saying that we think a more densified approach along the existing roadlines is preferable than and could be achieved with that many lot sizes in three hectares. hectares, preserves the connectivity, but doesn't impact the flora and fauna of that area in the same way, reduces the impact on the connectivity. Other aspects are just the community notification process, like the number of people who've come to us and said, "What's this thing about a development? We moved in here five years ago, we know nothing about it," because there's been no contact happening at all. And even when Landcom advertised their EPBCA referral for the protection of a spand species, so going to the federal government for consideration that they could destroy a third of this plant species on the site that's protected on the EPBCA register, they couldn't even give the correct contact details for Landcom. And when we notified them of that, they didn't extend the consultation period, they just said that they'd accept submissions over the day, over the weekend, sorry. So, 78 submissions were lodged against the EPBCA approval of that plant species being destroyed, and 77 of them were against it, one was for. The other thing about this development is it benefits from being considered by council and the Joint Regional Planning Panel that it's, will cause significant damage to the environment, but that it's in the community benefit. We have a need for housing, so land has to be cleared, but the idea of densification achieves these outcomes without needing to clear so much bushland. The other thing about the site is that its level of destruction is significant for the powerful owl, which has roosting in there, and so 46% of the large hollow-bearing trees will be destroyed, and hundreds of other smaller hollow trees will be destroyed, and the smaller trees are the ones that provide the homes for the possums that the powerful owl eats and requires. This requires the powerful owl to travel further, wider, and then more likely to be hit by car strikes. So, that's why our concern is that council has not undertaken appropriate assessment of that, neither has the Joint Regional Planning Panel. And in fact, council developed in 2014 a large forest birds protection plan and guidelines, and this goes against the very guidelines that they developed, but the DA was submitted in 2013, so it wasn't assessed considering the 2014 work. The other thing we did was that they failed to identify some of the microbats. We've got a microbat expert in there, they've undertaken a survey, the test of significance that's required was not met, they've indicated that, that hasn't been accepted by the Joint Regional Planning Panel, they've just said more remediation work will have to happen. So, this aspect of it particularly concerns us, that even when you've got protected plant species on the national register, when you've got vulnerable species like the powerful owl, the little bent windback, sugar gliders, sorry, feather gliders, and squirrel gliders, we can't seem to get the voice of, or the ear of the appropriate people to address this. The other part that bothers me is that Landcom hasn't even followed its own reconciliation action plan in regards to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, and my daughter will mention that side of it because it's part of the things that she's very passionate about as well, and there's been very poor, well, zero engagement other than sending a letter off to the land council around the Aboriginal community and considering something else that she'll mention. So, in living in that area for 25 years, it's, we're still waiting for, sorry, I wanted to highlight this point before I wrap up, and that is that when consent's given, we're at the local level still trying to see that conditions have been met of previous approvals. So, there's a development right near this proposed area that from 25 years ago, the conditions of approval from then have not been met or enforced by council, and we're still waiting for those aspects from 25 years ago to be met and see justice in regards to that. Yet, we're meant to take a reassurance that the conditions as prescribed by the Joint Regional Planning Panel will be met by Landcom, who in their case may sell on two of the superlots to another developer, who'll then go back to council and seek additional variations. So, it's the chipping away of these provisions and protections that we're worried about, and what does in perpetuity really mean? That's what we're a bit concerned about, that it usually means that a DA may go in the future to try and repurpose some other land or get some other land rezoned, so we see this happening to this location if this development does proceed. Look, these zombie developments with the delayed consents mean that people who move into the area, they know nothing about the potential destruction that's about to happen. The people who live there who know about it haven't been able to change the opinion of the council or the Joint Regional Planning Panel, and we need to highlight the planning process is not protecting our biodiversity. And we appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and I'll pass on to my daughter to mention a few things before we wrap up.
Thank you.
Um, hello. So, I'm a student in year 12 attending Cardiff High School, which is pretty close to the bushland development, and at my school, we have students who live in the Kieranari Aboriginal Hostel, which is just up the road from the school. Alongside that hostel is where the development will take place, and the hostel homes, students who are from more rural areas possibly do not have access to more of a wide range of educational opportunities. So, having it set in this bushland environment is what I would believe is a very important factor. My mother is an Aboriginal woman herself, and she has links to the Camillaire country, but she has lived on Awabakawaraua land for the last 30 years, she's raised me and my brothers here, and the Kieranari hostel has always been there. There's been so many students going through that hostel, and having it in that area and with the surroundings of bushland is a really important thing culturally, not only just in terms of connection, but kind of a relation to back home and that kind of thing. It's very important, I believe, and I know that that is to other people as well. I think that the lack of consultation from the Aboriginal community is what I would put as embarrassing. There has been not a good enough amount and not enough to say that we've got the opinions and voices of Indigenous people in the community. I think that it needs to be more, there needs to be specific people who are spoken to, whether that be individuals at the hostels such as students themselves or the, you know, den mother kind of people and the carers at the hostel. It's very important to hear those voices. Also, like Aboriginal education officers within the school who can provide a voice and have a level of, I'm going to say, authority in that space, and they know what they're talking about. It's very important to hear these people out, and people who've been in the areas for so many years. I think that is a very important form of consultation that needs to take place. The other thing is that the Aboriginal community in this area does not benefit in any way, shape, or form from the development taking place, which is quite a large downside, in my opinion. I have talked to people at my own school, and I'll mention that the bushland is, you know, at this point threatened, and people kind of look at me weird and they say, "Oh, I didn't know this," or "I wasn't aware of this," and nobody is hearing it, which is what we're trying to do, to spread this to all cultures, to all communities. And I think that the Aboriginal community definitely, definitely needs to be hearing this because it's such an important, it's in such an important area for students and for the Kieranari hostel.
Thank you. Thank you. So, in that context, our summary is that the marginal approval process that has allowed this development to proceed to where it is now has been based purely on a subjective assessment of what community interest means. The environmental considerations have been thought to, hope to be achieved or addressed through various treatments rather than demonstrating or acknowledging that there's a net loss of bushland, a net loss of the space. And in relation to climate change, obviously with clearing of the 12 hectares, the heat scenario that comes from that is an aspect that we're concerned about, but generally we're concerned that when you have a new development like this clearfelling does, instead of selective clearing, you end up with the replanting having a survival rate of about 30%. So, about 70% of the new trees that will be planted in the new suburb won't survive the plumber running over them, the person parking on the verge, the other works that go on in the site over the period of time. And this happens right across subdivisions across New South Wales. It's, the planting goes in and the majority of it is lost. So, it doesn't rectify the situation in a significant way. It's achieved in that it was planted, but it's lost to the community. The only other one that I'd mention there is that we've developed an alternative management plan, obviously, we've sent that to the committee anyway, it has 22 recommendations in it, it outlines more in depth the things that we've mentioned today. We appreciate the time, and we do believe that there is a way to protect our biodiversity, and it is by resourcing the monitoring of developments. We have that fiscal imbalance in the state federal, we have the fiscal imbalance from the state to local council as well, and councils are beset with trying to monitor these sorts of scenarios. So, anything from my point of view that addresses the ability to monitor and improve how conditioning is reported on or becomes more visible to the community would be of great benefit. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Very compelling evidence about, I can't quite remember what description you said there, Ms. Warram, about, I think it was you embarrassed about the consultation process.
Yes.
Yeah, so with, so I suppose my question to you now is, with this development and the fact that 1984, the land was identified for housing, and now we've seen the 2012 and the plans moving forward, and I just, I just actually had a quick look and understand that we were also looking for, last year we were looking for feedback about a native species called the black-eyed Susan, which is interesting, sorry, it's my name. Is it?
A lot of white-eyed pears.
No, that's right. The Tetraethia juniora, I think it is, but clearly I think that's a nationally listed plant, and I think it's, yeah, located in your region. But, so what I would be asking at this point is, is it too late? Have the plans gone on for so long that it's an inevitable, it's a fait accompli, or what does the, what do, I hear that you say loud and clear, and you've got a really good vision, and you can identify all these flaws and problems in the process, some of which the knowledge now that this is an area that is significant to First Nations young people and educators in the area. Is it, is it too late? Like, what, you know, where are we? What do we do?
So, where it's up to is that with the Tetraethica juniora, or however you say it, let's just stick to TJ, so we don't just say the word.
I don't mind black-eyed Susan.
Or the black-eyed Susan, yeah. So, in regard to that plant species, unfortunately, the federal government, we just found out seven months, six to seven, seven months after a piece of paper's been signed, to say that the developer is given permission to destroy significant amounts of that federally protected species on this site. But even before that, Landcom determined they'd go and do soil compaction tests. So, next minute I see people trekking through the bushland with excavators before they've got their consent in place, and they're destroying plant species that's federally protected by driving through there with the excavators. So, I go and ask the guys, "What are they doing?" And they're digging 20 holes that take about a 10-kilo sample bag out. You and I could do that with a shovel, all right? But they're driving excavators through this area that has a federally protected species, and they've done that in 20 locations, and then they've cleared out spaces the size of this room to get that sample bag because of the excavators going in there, when manually this, this should be done manually in an area like that. So, that's happened to 20 locations across the area.
Is that one of your examples of actually the proponent, the holder of the land not following the right rules and not?
Yeah, the holder of land doesn't, this is where compliance is useless, writing it. You might as well be a parent telling your child 50 times and never following through. So, but getting back to what you're asking about, I'm saying that with the federal government approving the destruction of 628 clumps of this plant species across the part where the development is because they're going to clear fell that, the outcome should be that they look at a redesign of the lots, and they try and align it closer to the road line than going deeper into the bush. And a diagram within our submission shows you the transect lines of the plants and animal species across that area and how it connects into the broader Lake Macquarie region. So, it shows you other preserved areas that this specific site connects to, and we're trying to protect that connectivity. So, I've told my four children, who've been worried about me pursuing this for years, that 99.9% of this development will probably go ahead because of Landcom doing it, and people don't want to go against Landcom. But the 0.1% says that we'll do the best we can, and if we can get a better outcome for the environment, that's what we're going for. So, we would say that unless they get a stewardship agreement, it can't go ahead. Unless they don't get approval for the traffic upgrade that they're planning to do, it doesn't go ahead. If they hadn't got the federal government approval for the destruction of that species, it wouldn't go ahead. So, at the moment, they've still got consent up till December next year to get this development on its way. So, we're continuing to work up to there to make them meet their conditional approval from the Joint Regional Planning Panel, and then the council says, "Yes, you've met these 26 or whatever conditions there are, you can go ahead with your development." But until that point, they haven't demonstrated that they can commence the development. But meanwhile, they're driving excavators through the site, expressing, you know, expressing arrogance in saying, "Well, we're going to get it done anyway, we're going to clear all this so we can damage this now anyway."
But it's not, and so with that 1% or whoever you're suggesting, there's still, you still hold hope that there's a chance that actually there could be a different use for this land entirely, and that it could be?
Our first approach was a judicial review through a barrister. Our second approach was to lobby Kenya Plebe Sec not to sign that agreement to destroy the protected species. Our third approach will be to go more of a political approach and to look at each of the components that they have to comply with to make it happen.
And are you aware in terms of your local government that there's, yeah, under their housing strategy, there are other areas where housing is going to be built to supply and bring on the, you know, addressing the housing need, housing supply issue?
Sure, sure. I cut down my presentation, obviously, because of respect for your time, but basically, just down the road, there's a lead smelter that's selling lots of land that have been repurposed, and people are paying thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars for those sites. And that's what we should be doing, not clearing vital bushland, but repurposing grey land, land that's, you know, being repurposed. And in the Hunter, there is a large amount of former industrial land that can be repurposed for housing, and there's a large amount of former agricultural land that's being repurposed for housing. In fact, there's an oversupply, I would say, of lots available right now for housing in the Hunter. But what has shown in the purchasers' eyes is that people have predominantly bought infill land rather than going to those outer regions, because infill land is where, you know, knocking down and rebuilding is where you're going to get all the services already, the transport, the shops, you know, nice cafe, et cetera. So, yeah, there is lots of land that we can use, and Landcom should be using, rather than clearing vital bushland with the powerful owl in there, and one that's got an Aboriginal hostel on site for rural kids from Maori and Berwana and Burke coming to. And they, in our submission- And they, in our submission, you'll see some of the totems they've practiced in the bush and some of the trees even, which we didn't know about until we went in, had a look. I'll stop rambling now.
No, thank you very much. But so your ultimate hypothesis here, though, is that it's, it's not too late. We should be stopping this plan. Landcom should be doing the ultimate, highest and best use for the land and that that is actually to protect it and regenerate it. That's kind of what I'm hearing. And, and really, really respect and explore what young people and First Nations people are suggesting would be best for them into the future as well.
When we went to the Joint Regional Planning Panel, Landcom was there. We asked Landcom the question, what is one example of best practiced, practice in property development that you're doing on this site? And the spokesperson for Landcom at that hearing couldn't give us one. And that shocked me because I thought they'd come up with quickfire five or six examples, not one. So we're saying that this development, in fact, because it's dragged on for so long for them, the Joint Regional Planning Panel and the council have been very accommodating of Landcom to try and get this across the line as opposed to what it would be for a private developer. And that's concerning in a sense that, that they would, for 105 lots, down the road, near the train station, there's a development on about a hectare and a half for 95 lots. And not housing units, not housing lots, okay? So that to me makes more sense than destroying, so we're here to protect the bush.
Yes.
And so it doesn't make any sense what Landcom's doing. And Landcom should be our friends because they are the government. They are, I know they're arms length, et cetera. But they should be doing best practice to show developers how things should be done, not doing this drawn out, you know, et cetera.
Dragging 1984 to 2024.
Provisions in 2024.
Okay, thank you. Our time's run out. We're a little bit over. And can I just also really thank you, Ms Warram, for joining and presenting today and coming and giving evidence? It's not often we have the absolute privilege to hear from young people directly. So I commend your courage and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Her question was, can she take a name tag?
It was just really official.
The secretary of staff are nodding their head rigorously.
He takes Susan, he wants to.
You can take all our name tags. Thank you so much for joining us and your evidence. Thank you. I see you both there. Can you see and hear us?
Yep, yes, we can.
Terrific, okay. Thank you. Thank you both very much for joining and I apologize, we're running a little bit behind time. Could I please get each of you to state your name, your position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, which I assume you have in front of you? And we'll start with you, Mr Burton, please.
Yep, my name is Eber Bootron. I'm the Chief Community Officer at Lismore City Council. And my affirmation is I solemnly, sorry, I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now I'm about to give, be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr Bootron, I apologize. I actually did know that was your name. So I apologize for the wrong pronunciation. Mr Parks, I didn't get that one wrong.
All right, hello. My name's Andy Parks. I'm the coordinator of strategic planning at Lismore City Council. And I also solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for coming along. Would either of you like to start by making an opening statement?
Look, I might start. I'd like to say we're probably not as prepared as we normally would. We were given very late notice of the session today. But I guess a broad overview really about the planning system itself. So I've provided this, had this conversation with many colleagues. But we're working off a, the Environmental Planning Assessment Act 1979. And so the New South Wales legislative planning system is based on a document that is over 45 years old. And over that period of time, there's been amendments, there's been amendments to SEPS, to ministerial directions and other bolt-ons along the way. However, invariably, we're still working off a document that's, that's pretty old. The environment and the planning systems and the challenges faced by, by the community through the planning process has come a long way since, over the last 40 plus years. So just from my own personal experience, I've worked in South Australia, Western Australia, Queensland as well as New South Wales. Each of the other states have gone through various changes in legislation. They've all amended their relevant planning acts. Even Queensland has gone through, I think, at least four, if not five, iterations over the last 15 plus years. So I think when we're considering whether it's climate change, whether it's economic issues, whether it's environmental issues, et cetera, I think New South Wales is probably due for a review of its planning processes and all the documentations and all the legislations associated with it. Once again, broadly speaking, whether we're dealing about climate change or otherwise, if we do do a review of the planning process, it shouldn't necessarily be reviewed through the lens of one issue. It should actually have that holistic approach and the triple bottom line as we will speak about in terms of the environment, social, the economic aspects. They should all be considered on its merits and whilst climate change is a very important issue, the, the community across New South Wales and even across the nation is, is going through a lot of its own challenges and whether it's housing supply, whether it's housing, provision of housing issues, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's economic issues, challenging economic issues. I think any review of planning legislation should address all those items in its integrity, sorry, in its entirety. Also, the, our current planning system really is guided by the DA process. I believe it should have a stronger focus from a strategic planning perspective. The front end is probably the most important, critical element when dealing with planning matters. And so I think you should front load the planning system and have greater emphasis in terms of strategic planning. And along with that strategic planning, greater emphasis in terms of community engagement consultation with all the relevant stakeholders, including traditional owners as well as the broader community, should all be done at the, at the front end. If you get your planning right through master planning, through the broad strategies that are provided at the front end, it should actually facilitate the development assessment process. And the current criticism of local government, the planning process is a lot of the delays being experienced by the community, by the development industry and other stakeholders. So I think there should be greater emphasis at the strategic planning outset. We'd get our LEPs, our strategic plans, our master plans correct. And we should actually facilitate a quicker turnaround time from a DA perspective. One last item in relation to climate change principles in the planning process itself. Planning is just one tool when dealing with climate change. We can make a lot of changes, whether it be through legislation, through our own strategic plans, through our own measures. But it needs to be complemented by broader federal and state government initiatives and interventions to address climate change issues. Local government through a planning process can't do it alone.
Thank you. Mr Parks, did you want to add anything?
No, as I said, I'll just follow up on whatever said that we've probably been a little less than prepared as we would like to be. But I'll just comment that, we're assuming Eber and I have been invited as kind of senior kind of planning positions within council. Just that the comments we make today are those of the planning staff, not necessarily of our elected councillors. And I guess Lismore is in a, in a pretty unique position in that, you know, the disasters of 2012 and our relationship with the Reconstruction Authority. There's probably some lessons to be learnt there and I guess that's, that's possibly what we can, we can add of value to this inquiry.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm sure my colleagues will have questions. I certainly do. But it is, thank you very much for coming along because Lismore is, I think, you know, council on the front line, ground zero to some extent. I'm just curious about if you can talk just a little bit about what is the relationship with the Reconstruction Authority? It's something that we've kind of been prodding around the edges as a committee as we've been discussing the issues about flood impacts, fire, et cetera. And just very curious about where is Lismore council? And as planning and strategic planners, what is your relationship with the Reconstruction Authority? And where is it really, really assisting in terms, or if it is, where it's assisting? And if not, where it's not and what suggestions you might have now, now that we're a couple of years on?
Okay, I'll just start by saying that we are making a submission to the separate inquiry, which is closing today under the Reconstruction Act, so. But Eber, if you want to, if you want to start, I'll, I'll add anything that I think's noted.
Yep, thanks, Andy. What we might do is actually put forward the submission that we're putting into the other inquiry and send that through your way as well. I guess our relationship with the state in terms of the recovery process has gone through several iterations. We started with the Northern Rivers Reconstruction Corporation and that transformed into the New South Wales RA. So we've had a few resets and we've, we have been working with, whether it's the NRC or the New South Wales RA over that period of time. So that's come through various avenues. One critical aspect really is the reconstruction of our city and that's our roads, our bridges, our buildings, et cetera. There's a, there's a significant amount of reconstruction that needs to, needs to occur in the hundreds of millions of dollars, if not into over, well, well over a billion dollars to reconstruct the city's assets. That relationship has been ongoing with the New South Wales RA and it's really how quickly we can actually set up a framework for monies to be provided to council to actually commence the proper reconstruction. I believe there's been ongoing conversations over the last couple of years and longer to actually do, to do, to achieve that. We've gone through, I guess for lack of a better word, a bit of frustration, but I think we're nearly there in relation to actually formulating a proper framework in that space. From a planning perspective, we've been in constant consultation with the NRC and now the New South Wales RA in terms of establishing relevant frameworks. Sometimes a frustrating relationship, but sometimes we've achieved outcomes that they've included conversations around the Resilient Homes Programme, the Resilient Lands Programme, and, and various conversations in terms of just communicating between New South Wales RA and council to actually establish what we can do to actually better support the flood impacted community that still hasn't managed to return to their homes.
So I might just add that I think, you know, it was a new, when the NRC was set up, it was a new agency. I think there was a lack of kind of clarity in their role. There has been a massive turnover of staff in the two years that they've existed. And I would say a kind of lack of urgency in some of, some of their response and, you know, a bit of a lack of genuine community participation in how to proceed. I'd suggest that we've been encouraging the RA to utilize some of the powers that they have in their act. There seems to be a reluctance to do so, which I think has delayed the delivery of new land release and infrastructure that could provide flood free housing for Lismore community. And yeah, look, there's been a range of, a range of issues, particularly in the, in the resilient homes and resilient lands programmes that, that we've had interaction with the RA on.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr Parks, just picking up on that question or that answer you provided there. What are the powers that the authority are reluctant to use explicitly?
There was an example, the reluctance to rezone land, the reluctance to enter into kind of joint virtues and the purchase, acquisition of land. So they went through a process, there was 300 and something submissions made for, for private landholders to submit. We're two years down the track, there's been two announcements, but no, no real progress. So I think it's really just goes to that urgency that the act gives the, the authority extraordinary powers to respond once there's been a declaration by the minister, which, which we've had. But that, that, those powers don't seem to translate into the urgency to actually provide the land and infrastructure required. At the moment, we've got a situation where the Resilient Homes Programme has been, there's over 300 houses in the Lismore urban area have been purchased. That number's likely to go to 500, much more across the region. But, but, but no land, you know, within sight of, you know, years away for people being able to relocate to. So just a real mismatch in the, the delivery of those programmes and the ability to utilize powers to act quickly, which, which is clearly there in the act.
On that, so with the, so are you seeing at this point in time any development proposals or just the exercise of existing uses and so on? That people are relocating or placing themselves back into homes or even commercial premises or retail premises? That from an ideal perspective in terms of flood and danger from flood, are we seeing because of that reluctance or that slowness or that lack of urgency? Are we seeing people within our communities of Lismore simply placing themselves back in positions of harm because they aren't seeing any alternative?
So I'll start, Andy, you can jump in afterwards. So I guess as part of the Resilient Homes Programme, it didn't include commercial or industrial land. So what we do have is some businesses moving back into North and South Lismore to reestablish their businesses so that they are moving back into flood liable areas. In relation to the broader community, we do have community members that have moved back into their houses. There's several programmes who actually make a couple of rooms habitable in each of their dwellings. Sorry, sorry, in each of their houses. And so people have moved back in there. So we still have people that have moved back in there and we've got many more people still living in pods and, sorry, pod villages as well as hotel motel accommodation. So a significant part of our community is still impacted.
I'll just add, so anecdotally, we're aware of a number of situations where people have accepted a buyback and potentially got, you know, 450, 500,000 for a house in a high flood risk area. But then taking that cash and kind of just move down the road to an area that's not within a buyback, but still in a high flood risk area and potentially bought something for 250 and essentially been able to pay off a mortgage, but, but they're still living in a, in a high flood, flood risk area. And that's, we've got, that's a limitation of the programme that the raising criteria at the moment, like South Lismore's a really good example, in order to be eligible for, for a raising funding, it's only eligible to people who are impacted by a kind of one in 20 probability event. Whereas the Queensland Programme, anybody who is below the flood planning level was eligible for, for raising. There's another example, there's a, there's a clause in the standard instrument LEP that allows the rebuilding of a dwelling within five years of a natural disaster. And that might be suitable after, after a bushfire where you can build to a higher standard. You can build to a, you know, a kind of flames on standard. But a flood risk is a flood risk and there's an example in, you know, Lake Street, North Lismore, where all the other houses in the street have been bought by the Reconstruction Authority. One house was completely obliterated by the flood. Somebody bought a vacant block of land and they've now lodged the DA to rebuild a house in that area because the planning legislation allows them to do so.
And that was, yeah, look, that's really interesting because that was precisely my next, the next part of the question was, what, you know, what are you seeing in terms of the planning system? And it's a bit, so, so what will, obviously without predetermining or preempting the, the outcome of that, how do you think you now deal with that? What tools do you have as a, as a council and as a planning department within a council experiencing these kind of very novel and frontline, front of the line issues in terms of responding? How will you deal with that as a planning proposal?
Yep. So I guess that's an ongoing issue that we need to get our heads around. So I guess what Andy's described is what we were fearing as part of the buybacks programme. And that was potentially a checkerboard effect that would occur in, in terms of people wanting to stay versus people wanting to move on. So that has a significant impact to our infrastructure delivery. So the example that Andy provided, if we're required to provide water and sewage infrastructure to individual homes along streets, that's going to be difficult just in relation to our infrastructure requirements that require a certain capacity to be moving, especially sewage capacity to be moving through that, to that infrastructure to work. So we're still So we're still waiting to actually understand what that checkerboard aspect looks like for council so we can actually address and fully understand. But I guess it goes back to my previous comment that there was a decision to commence a buyback programme without the strategic planning in terms of what were going to be the next steps? If we did have a checkerboard approach, how do we avoid a checkerboard approach? And what's the best use of that land post buybacks? And then post the end of the Resilient Homes Programme? I guess the other aspect, going back to the previous question as well. Anecdotally, as Andy was saying, we still have people living in some of those houses that have been bought back. They're in that waiting pattern until further land comes on board. In terms of the more recent announcements, some land might come on board in the next six or 12 months at Mount Pleasant. But the other lands that have been announced at Southern Cross Uni and we're aware of another one that's imminent, they're literally two, three plus years away before they come, come on as potential sites for relocation. So we're in that state of abeyance until we find alternative opportunities, whether it's on rural land or other land that might be able to come on board quicker. Our impacted community are expected to stay in their current residences for a considerable period of time post the 2022 floods.
And I suppose it's like, it's one thing for people to stay or return, return to premises as part of the, that are part of the high impact area. But it's another thing to experience what you're suggesting is happening at Lake Street and that somebody is coming with actually a new proposal to. So when you say you are waiting, I understand that you're waiting for new lands to be released and available for community to move to. But what are you, are you waiting or are you looking to the state government for guidance? Or do you have the tools you need to be addressing the checkerboard or the very potentially perverse consequences of somebody brand new coming and proposing something and being the last woman standing or the only woman standing in and on an entire flood plain?
Yes, so it's a bit of both. So we're waiting for more information from New South Wales RA. And what's absent in that space really is the strategic planning, especially in that North Lismore area. As to what's, what's going to be the long term outcome for, for that area in terms of whether it gets rezoned for other purposes? We still need to have that conversation with the community, with our elected members and with the broader state governance in relation to what does North and parts of South Lismore look like in the long term? It's, it's a little bit of unknown, there's a lot of options there. Everyone's, some people have spoken about public recreation space, others have spoken about naturalisation, others have spoken about community gardens, others have actually spoken to actually provide other uses that might be able to withstand, sorry, might be complement or still be within a flood area. So there's, there's still a lot more planning to be done. I guess we are seeking further advice and guidance from the state government as well, whether it's through New South Wales RA, through the Department of Planning. And invariably, depending on what the future looks like for North and South Lismore, we'd be seeking further funding to actually implement that future vision for that area.
And do you think there should be, sorry, Mr Parks, I know you're about to jump in, but just if you could also address, so should there be, should there be some interim measures? Like some, because otherwise, I mean, I'm literally anticipating council being dragged to court because they refuse a development on a flood plain as, in this interim, as we're trying to strategically work out the future. I'm just wondering, is there, should there be some form of interim, some moratorium, some pause, some hiatus? I'm interested in your views on this, Mr Parks.
Yeah, look, I'll talk about a couple of the specific clauses if you like. So clause 5.21 of the LEP requires councils to consider climate change for development in the flood planning area. But it doesn't say how we should do that. And it's basically up to councils to determine their own way that they consider climate change. So I would say that the state should lead there. We've done a draft at DCP, which kind of essentially takes a kind of worst case scenario out to 2100 and sets a flood planning level there. But each council, so that has not been adopted by our council and it basically puts it at an individual council level as to how they're going to address climate change. Look, the scenario I mentioned at Lake Street and that clause, you know, which is 5.9 that allows the rebuilding within five years of a natural disaster, it's not a common thing. The one at Lake Street is the only one I'm aware of. But again, just as a simple amendment, I think that that clause could specifically relate to bushfire rather than all natural disasters. Because nobody wants to be in a situation where all of the other houses in the street are being removed. And council's only recourse for rejection is to rely on a kind of public interest thing under the EPNA Act. So it's a pretty weak one. We can't even rely on 5.21, consider the flood risk, consider climate change. The only fallback council has to refuse something in that instance is say, well, it's not in the public interest. And then try and defend and justify that.
In terms of your, in terms of your flood now, the information that is informing any development decision in relation to flood, do you feel that you now have adequate flood mapping? Are you working to the PMFs? Have you set? And who's doing that and what, what's your view in terms of your reliance on materials?
It's a very good question and it's a very grey area in Lismore because we've had new modelling done and a draft DCP that was not endorsed by our council. So the RA have the power to set flood planning levels across the state. Again, that's another example of a power that they have that they haven't used to date. So again, the state could actually mandate a flood planning level rather than leave it to individual councils.
Yep, through your chair, can I just provide a bit more comment to that? I think just to go to the heart of your question, we don't have flood mapping for the whole catchment. That, that body of work has currently been undertaken by Siro. And coming from Queensland where it was just accepted that there was holistic flood mapping for the whole catchment. What we have in Lismore is flood mapping for part of the catchment. Similar Cogel has similar as well as Richmond Valley and Ballina. We don't have an overall flood map for the whole area. That's forthcoming by the work being undertaken by Siro. So in the absence of that, I think there has been criticism in terms of the accuracy, in terms of the assumptions made, in terms of the current flood mapping and modelling we have. But in a, I guess in a proper environment, we'd have a full flood map for the whole catchment. And it's probably a project that should have been led at a state level because it crosses over various local government boundaries. So that's probably what we're waiting on from Siro. I think the next critical aspect really is the implementation of that. Each local government area has to undertake flood risk management as part of that. And so the first aspect really is Siro to complete their flood mapping for the whole of the catchment. Secondly is what flood risk measures need to be incorporated. And the most critical aspect really is funding at a state and federal government level to implement those flood risk measures.
Yeah, and I'll just echo what Ever said, that flood risk again is done at a local council level rather than at a catchment level. And one of the requirements too is that in order to implement any of the actions in your flood plan risk management plan, councils must stump up 33% of the cost from general revenue. So it can't be from separate grants or, or other projects. So we can identify a range of measures, but if we can't fund at least 33%, then the state won't even consider co-funding. So that there's, there's a real disincentive there for councils to pursue, you know, particular projects identified in the flood plan risk management plan. Which again, as I said, should probably be done at a catchment scale rather than a local government because you get discrepancies between how different councils will carry that work out.
We have, we have had fairly consistent evidence around that from even the, all the Sydney coastal councils made representations around that and the problem with the financing. It almost seems, I'm just ticking and thinking aloud, it seems almost absurd really that the state wouldn't just fund this work given the recovery money that they have to front up through bad planning from not getting flooding right. I just wanted to ask you as well, we heard some, I heard some submissions in relation to a development for, development on the flood plain in Yambur recently. And there was one submission that was made that I found very compelling about actually for development assessment, flood considerations needs to be much more than flood, than floor height. And I'm just wondering, I feel like Lismore council strategic planners would have some view on that. And wondering if you could, just in terms of how the planning system really needs to factor in flooding at the development consent as well as the strategic planning level. I imagine you have some fairly novel insights. And if you would be willing to speak to that, I'd be very grateful.
Yep, I'll start once again there, Andy, you can jump in afterwards. So once again, it needs to be front end loaded at the strategic planning aspect. And if you don't get that strategic planning right and all the master planning and all the mitigation that needs to occur, then it makes your life at a DA assessment process much harder. So from a DA perspective, we do take flooding into consideration and we do take it in relation to not just the, the flood planning level in terms of the building height, but also in relation to access to the site in relation to will that development be cut off during significant events? I guess the difficulty for our development assessment planners is trying to make an assessment of a particular development based on the current planning, DCPs, LEPs and principles versus what might have occurred following that. And a case example is the February 2022 flood. So whilst you've got two bits of legislation that aren't necessarily, sorry, two bits of legislation and events that aren't necessarily talking to each other or haven't been adapted to represent what happened in the 2022 flood, it makes our development assessment planners life very, very difficult to assess properly.
Yeah, I'll just add in that, yeah, so evacuation routes are the next biggest consideration after flood planning level. What is the ability for somebody to safely evacuate an area? And there are parts of Lismore because of the, where the rivers and bridges are located that are seriously constricted. Fill is another consideration. So there's been parts of Lismore that historically have been filled to allow buildings to be at a high height, particularly industrial areas. But obviously filling a site has impacts, you know, on surrounding land. So that's a bit of a contested area. And again, different councils have different approaches to fill within the flood plain and how that could be used. And it also puts quite a financial burden on, you know, potentially small developments wanting to do a small amount of fill. If we require them to do a site specific flood impact assessment, that can be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to get that kind of very localised assessment. The other thing that I'll just throw out there that we've had as a conversation is one of the tools that we don't have in the planners kit at the moment is the idea of a hazard zone. If you've got an area, you know, because of its flood risk, you know, the community and council generally agree should have very restricted development opportunity. We just don't have anything in the zone kit other than calling it public recreation or an environmental zone. There's no such thing. And again, they used to be historically a kind of, a kind of risk zone.
Just on that, can you elaborate a little bit, given you've given some thought to that? What do you see?
Not a lot of thought, but I guess we're talking about the areas where the Reconstruction Authority have deemed it's not suitable for, for, for future habitation. And so there's a whole much larger question about what happens to that land in the long term. But as a tool for councillors to kind of declare through the planning process that there is a hazard there that should limit future development to only suitable activities, we just don't have that zone available. You know, essentially it has to be a recreation or an environment zone. Otherwise you revert back to a business or a residential zone.
Yep, sorry, just to jump in there through the chair. I guess that adds to the inflexibility of planning legislation and its inability to adapt to a changing circumstance. So I guess going back to one of your previous questions in terms of some of the community members still being within the flood zone, it's really about giving impacted residents choice and whether they want to wait another six months for any land to become available to relocate or to purchase and construct a new home? Or they want to wait another two, three plus years to do the same? Or whether we can actually amend our LEP to actually make more short term opportunities available? And whether that's making rural land available or looking at alternate sites? The, the planning system doesn't allow for that flexibility or that adaptability to actually be considered of a significant disaster that we've experienced.
So then on that, perhaps it would be fair to summarise, and we have heard this from other councils on the far south coast, but that the, the inflexibility of the standard instrument has actually not provided or has been a hindrance to good planning, particularly for areas that are experiencing the onset of climate impacts and novel risk factors? And that actually a better approach now might be to allow for more of those, not just local provisions, but actual local zonings, allow those back into our LEPs would be a beneficial thing? Is that what you're suggesting there?
I'd agree with that, that a broader planning level. And we're going back to prior to LEP template days. And it just provided a better context at a local planning level to actually have appropriate zoning for certain uses. Sorry, the other element in relation to the inability for the current legislation to adapt is so post or immediately post the flood, council was supporting temporary uses, whether that were pop up shops or whether they were people trying to relocate their businesses and work from homes. And we understood the need for that because people still needed to make an income. So the legislation doesn't readily provide for that. And it doesn't provide for that humanitarian or social need to adapt accordingly, even if it's for a temporary period of time, whether they're six months or 12 months, and for businesses to get back in. So it doesn't actually have that, that business or that economic focus as well. So I think it just needs to be much more flexible with regards to emergency disaster events, which invariably is linked to climate change.
And then can I just ask, I know we're out of time and we're running over and I'm very, we are so grateful to have you attend today, thank you. But can I just ask on another foot, given there is such a need to relocate in these release areas, is Lismore council, are you, sorry, are you as strategic planners finding any difficulty in relation to now moving into biodiversity lands? Just because that's one of the terms of the reference of this inquiry is looking at how the planning system. Are you experiencing or expecting any sort of unanticipated consequences with the desire to relocate en masse, let's say, homes and settlements and communities? In relation, and given the Northern Rivers is such a high biodiversity area? What's your experience to date?
In relation to future land release, we've got quite a bit of land already either rezoned or can be rezoned that doesn't necessarily have significant biodiversity impacts. But in relation to proper biodiversity environmental planning, once again, we, I don't believe we have that properly mapped across the whole LGA. There's been a guideline that's, that's been in draft for quite a while in relation to the Koala Plan of Management for the whole LGA. We currently have a Koala Plan of Management for a limited part of the LGA. But once again, we'd support.
I'll just jump in there, but it's not so much the mapping, it's the guidelines for the creation of a new comp. We've been waiting on guidelines from the state government since about 2021. And until such time, those guidelines are done, Lismore council can't complete a Koala Plan of Management for the rest of our LGA, for the whole LGA.
Yep, just the next step to that would be the implementation, which would be the mapping component. And we'd need funding to actually properly do a biodiversity map for the whole of the LGA. So in relation to relocation of dwellings into biodiversity impacted areas, I don't see that as a significant impact. But from a broader planning perspective, I think we need greater guidance from a state perspective on biodiversity matters, but also funding to actually map those areas properly. And it goes back to my original aspect that we need to get that strategic planning. And it goes back to my original aspect that we need to get that strategic planning undertaken at a, at a better level, at a higher level. And that would facilitate protection for environmental lands, but also facilitate future development applications that aren't impacting on biodiversity or aren't, aren't constrained in, in such a significant way.
Thank you. Are there any things you'd like to add? Yep. Final things?
There's a lot. When we talk about planning, there's many items we can talk about. But I, I think from a climate change and disaster management perspective, I think planning needs to, to change. We need short-term and short, medium and long-term measures. And that ranges from making quick changes to our LEP all the way through to implementing a broader strategic planning framework and medium to longer term. We do need legislative reform to actually be representative and reflective of the current environment we find ourselves in from a planning perspective.
Yeah. Look, I'll finish with, look, it's a really big question and the terms of reference for this inquiry are quite enormous. I think the thing that's really on my radar at the moment is the development of disaster adaptation plans or DAPs. So the state obviously did their state disaster adaptation plan and the RA is now tasked with doing regional and, and local DAPs. My concern is that the legislative, legislative weight of those is very, very weak. It only requires councils to have regard to the DAPs in carrying out their functions under the Local Government Act and the EPNA Act. That the term have regard is, is very weak. And I think for, for, if, if DAPs are supposed to be the tool that the state wants to have meaningful impact for how we prepare our communities for future climate change, then the DAPs could have considerable weight. But the way that the legislation is at the moment, it's going to require significant updates of both the Local Government Act and the EPNA Act if they're to have, have real teeth.
So you're actually saying that as a council on the frontline, if we're going to actually make the planning system responsive, we're going to have more, require more prescriptive ways in which we take planning forward rather than this ultimate discretion DA by DA. We need to have a good strategic focus and those DAPs will need to actually prescribe what can and can't happen. Otherwise, we're going to be facing some pretty catastrophic consequences on people's lives and the environment. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. I'd say the key is the strategic planning, whether it's at a local level or a regional level, the key is strategic planning and out of that will flow the DAPs, out, out of that will flow the development controls that are required. And more importantly, out of that will hopefully identify what mitigation implementation measures need to be undertaken, not just across the region, but within Lismore itself.
And then, and then, Mr. Parks, what you're saying is there's no, you do all of that, but then you've actually got to make it happen.
That's right. There's no point of doing all that work if all you have to do is have regard. So, so the North Coast and I think the Hawkesbury, Napier are the two pilot projects for, for doing regional DAPs. So, you know, the Reconstruction Authority is putting a, a lot of weight and resources into that process. I would just love to, at the end, but to, to make sure that, that what the outcome is, is that it, that it has some statutory weight.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much. If there's any matters taken on notice or any further questions, the secretary will be in contact with you. And I think you committed to providing a copy of your submission to the RA inquiry, which we would be very grateful to receive.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your attendance.
Thank you.